And let the record show that council members Ward and James are present and Mayor Potem Bane is present. And I did swear in newly elected council member Gene James last week, so he is eligible to participate in closed session.
Is he bona fide?
Yes. We'll do a ceremonial at the public, but he is really...
I'll move that we go into closed session.
And Gene, you seconded? Was that you or...?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All meeting order?
The city of San Clemente respects the many people of different faiths who reside here. The city council historically begins its session with an invocation offered by one of the religious leaders of our community with full appreciation of our shared belief that we are one nation under God. And while the city cannot endorse any particular religion, we respect the religious freedom and freedom of expression of all our citizens to pray as they feel led to pray. This evening's invocation will be given by Candy Blankman, pastor with San Clemente Presbyterian Church.
Okay, and if you would like to stand for the invocation, you can. Otherwise, please stand after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by me.
Let's pray. Oh God, who has power to rule over all things, whether we acknowledge it or not, we are grateful to live in a country where debate and public discourse are reasoned out in these chambers rather than fought out in the streets. Help these leaders to be guided by the truth and not just effective arguments or the loudest voices. Tonight, this council has already deliberated privately over serious matters with significant legal and financial ramifications. Give them wisdom for these weighty matters. In this session, they continue to deliberate over matters weighty for the city's safety, quality of life, from sidewalks to clean water and building safety. Keep these leaders mindful that there is a larger agenda and a greater accountability that we all will answer to. Keep us all mindful how we conduct business often speaks louder than the business we conduct. We have been given extraordinary freedom to do business so openly. Help us be good stewards of that freedom. As they govern, give these men and women the humility to call on your name throughout the business of this night, not just at the beginning, and to attend to the still small voice of guidance, which can much of the time be way quieter than the voices in the room. Whatever our challenges as a city, we know that compared to most of the world, we are rich and greatly blessed. We give thanks for this city and all the goodness it enjoys. We give thanks for all the citizens paid and volunteer who give their time and talent that contributes to the blessedness of this city. Tonight, for our elected officials, we ask for uncommon vision and clarity so that they will make decisions that will benefit the good of the majority of the people, knowing they cannot please all the people all the time. Keep them from petty arguments, from personal acrimony or vendetta. In a time when public discourse has become so polarized and so personal, might this council and this room be a place that conducts business with grace and civility. Help them to listen well to the voices that can be here tonight to speak, but also help them to attend to the needs of those who do not have voice. Give each council member courage to stand alone when necessary and humility to submit to others when needed, and the wisdom to know the difference. May the words on these chamber walls speak the truth. May we trust in you, oh God. Amen.
Okay, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Ferguson? Councilmember James? Councilmember Ward? Mayor Potem Bane?
Here.
And councilmember Hamm is absent. The first item on the agenda is a holiday serenade by the San Clemente High School Magicals under the direction of C.J. Daniel.
Good evening. My name is C.J. Daniel. I'm the choir director at San Clemente High School. These are our measurable singers. It's holiday tradition. They always come and sing for this council meeting, so we thank the council for inviting us over here. We have a few holiday selections for you to help you get you in the mood for the holiday season. The first one is Carol of the Bell, "Sweet and Sweet".
All the halls with boughs of holly, fa la 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 la, la 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 la. 'Tis the season to be jolly, fa la 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 la, la 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 la. Don we now our gay apparel, fa la 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 la, la la la. Troll the ancients yuletide carols. Troll the ancient yuletide carols, fa la 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 la, la 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 la. See the blazing Yule before us, fa la 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 la, la 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 la. Strike the harp and join the chorus, fa la 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 la, la 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 la. Follow me in merry measure, fa la 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 la, la 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 la. While I tell of yuletide treasure, fa la 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 la, la 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 la. Fast away the old year passes, fa la 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 la, la 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 la. Hail the new year as it passes, fa la 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 la, la 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 la. Sing we joyous all together, fa la 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 la, la 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 la. Heed us of the wind and weather, fa la 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 la, la 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 la.
This piece is one of the carols that we will be singing at the Disneyland Camel Light Performance on Sunday. We have the privilege of performing in that this year, so this is "O Come, O Come," Emmanuel.
O come, O come, Emmanuel, and ransom captive Israel that mourns in lonely exile here until the Son of God appear. Rejoice, rejoice, Emmanuel shall come to thee, O Israel.
O come thou wisdom from on high and order all things far and wide. To us the path of glory shows and calls us in the ways to go. Rejoice, rejoice, Emmanuel shall come to thee, O Israel.
I have two more pieces for you. This next one is called "Adoramus te Christe." It is a longstanding text in the Catholic Church tradition. It celebrates the coming of Christ and his redemptive work. So this is "Adoramus te Christe."
Adoramus te.
We're going to try that.
Et petetici musi.
Thank you so much. We're going to end with, we wish you a Merry Christmas, and we do, we wish you and your family a very Merry Christmas, a very happy holiday season, and a happy 2020. Oh my God.
We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Glad tidings we bring to you and your king. We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Now bring us some figgy pudding. Now bring us some figgy pudding. Now bring us some figgy pudding and bring it us here. Glad tidings we bring to you and your king. We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We won't go until we got some. No, we won't go until we got some. We won't go until we got some, so give it us here. Glad tidings we bring to you and your king. We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. For we all like figgy pudding. Yes, we all like figgy pudding. We all like figgy pudding, so bring it us here. Glad tidings we bring to you and your king. We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
I remember those days. I'm going to swear in, Jean. Okay. Let everybody. The first item on the agenda is the ceremonial oath of allegiance to newly-elected councilmember James. So I will meet him at the.
Are you coming down here?
If you could please raise your right hand and the key after "P." I state your name.
I, Jean James.
You solemnly swear or affirm?
You solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
I'll bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully?
I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter?
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And it's my pleasure to present to you your certification of election.
Thank you very much.
And at this time, I will conduct the election for mayor. I will come up to the dais. Following that, the newly-elected mayor will conduct the election for the mayor pro tem. At this time, I will open nominations for the office of mayor.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
I have a nomination. I think that Dan Bain has done an exceptional job filling in for Steve Swartz on the fly for this year. He's also the mayor pro tem, and I think following tradition of our city that I nominate him as the mayor.
I'll second that motion. Are there any other nominations? In that case, I would entertain a motion to close nominations and to elect Councilmember Bain to the office of mayor.
I solemnly?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mayor Bain.
All right, so I'm no longer acting now. It's for real. All right, so I'll entertain a nomination for mayor pro tem.
I'll make another nomination. I nominate Jean James.
Do I have a second?
Can Jean second his own nomination?
Could, if he wants to. I believe that that's happened before. Okay, so I'll make a substitute motion. I'll nominate Laura Ferguson as mayor pro tem.
I'll second that nomination.
Thank you.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, so I'll move that we close the nominations. Do I have a second?
Second.
So a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
So, I'll motion to approve Councilwoman Ferguson as mayor pro tem. We need a second, right?
We didn't count that. It's okay. Do you want to see where you're going to be seated for the year? Musical chairs time. Okay, then. First item on the agenda is a toll road update.
Sorry, real quickly, just before we get going, can we give?
Yes.
New councilmember James an opportunity to speak? Can we, that be appropriate now?
We should be, yes.
I see so many of my supporters here tonight, and my heart is so warmed by the fact that you're here, and so many of you did so much. I thank you. But my wife's not here, not because I'm unexpectedly getting divorced, but she had to be in Boston tonight. But I think it'd be remiss of me not to mention our former mayor, Steve Swartz. I'm sincere when I say this. I would much rather have run for a full term a year from now and have Mayor Swartz here with us today. We need to keep in mind a family lost a father and a husband, and we're getting ready to go into this holiday season, and let's keep the Swartz family in our prayers, and rest in peace, Steve Swartz. A good pastor had a good point a few moments ago. This is a great city, and when you compare our city to the rest of the world or even the rest of the country, we are indeed blessed and fortunate to live in this city. And with that, I would like to say, I would like to see some of the acrimony that we've had in politics in San Clemente, that we dispense with it, that we get to the business of running San Clemente and being here for all citizens. I have to keep in mind, 45% of the voters did not vote for me, but I have to represent them just as much as I represent the 55% who did vote for me. I will stay true to what I ran on: public safety, fiscal accountability, and quality of life issues. And with that, I'll shut up and turn it over to Mayor Bain. I think I'm the first person to have said that. Congratulations, Mayor Bain. And again, I reach out to all my colleagues on the council. I want to be your teammate. We will have robust debate. We won't always agree, but let's do it like the good pastor just said a few moments ago without the acrimony and drama. Thank you very much.
And Councilmember Hamm has sent a message he'd like for me to read.
I would like to congratulate newly-elected councilmember Jean James, and I look forward to working together to address the critical issues most important to residents. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend tonight's meeting due to my work schedule.
So before we take our speaker cards real quick, I just wanted to take the opportunity, not to upstage Jean, but to welcome Jean to the council, to the dais. It's nice having a full council again for that debate, and later we'll get to share the workload, but to say a few words as mayor, I just wanted to say really quickly, I saw a lot of, and first of all, I'm incredibly honored, Kathy, that you would nominate me and rest of my colleagues that you would select me. It's been a very difficult past year, sort of learning the ropes and on the fly, and Jean, thank you so much for honoring late Mayor Steve Swartz, because we left his seat open for a reason, and I saw the last election, there were sort of statements made that as a council, we couldn't even agree on a mayor. And I want to address that quickly, because that actually wasn't the case. We actually, all 4-0, did agree that we would leave this seat open in honor of Mayor Swartz, and we made a commitment to each other that we would work together as best that we could, and I think that not all the votes show that, but most of them do, I would say 90-plus percent. And I just want to thank Kathy and Chris for being willing to work with us, and I want to thank Laura for all that she does and working with me as well. I thought as a council for a 4-0, under the circumstances, we did a commendable job of getting along and leading the city through a very, very difficult period. And I would just echo what councilmember James said. We've been through two very vicious and nasty election cycles now. It's taken a toll on all five of the people that'll be sitting on this dais, and we all want more than anything to get to the business of the city, which is what I think most of you want. The voters have spoken now. We know what we need to be doing up here, and we hope that we can get to that. So I hope all of you will take into mind that we're all effectively volunteers up here, and we're doing what we think is best, and as Jean said so eloquently, we will not always agree, and we are five very different people. So I think the community for the support that you've all shown through So I think the community for the support that you've all shown through very, very, very trying circumstances the last year, and I hope to have your continued support as we try to work through 2019 into 2020. So thank you very much. Our one and only speaker card is Mr. Rick Leffler, related to "welcome council," it says.
Counsel, full counsel, that's awesome. That's awesome. Thank you, Kathy. Like I don't speak loud enough. Anyway, I'm really optimistic, because most everything that Dan, you said, and Jean said is pretty much what I have here. It's nice to have a full council, and I want you, everybody, to remember that, all five of you, including Chris that isn't here tonight, you were voted in by the voters. Jean was voted in, Dan, Laura, Kathy, you were all voted in by the voters, and you deserve a lot of credit for that. Another one thing to remember is, and I think this is for everybody, and you've heard me say this before, is that you're representatives. You know, nobody... Well, maybe some people elected you because they thought that you were smarter than us and could just make all of the decisions for us, but I think most people didn't. They trust that you're going to take the information that you have from the community, and you're going to represent us by your actions. And I think you've all shown that that's exactly how you do feel. Because the only problems, seems like all politicians at all levels have, is when they lose touch with that and forget that they are representatives, and they lose the insight, they get out of touch with their constituents. So I implore all of you to keep on doing what you're doing, stay in touch. You've done a great job, again, Dan said it, and for a four-person council, there was very few, you know, two-two votes. And I don't really even recall them on anything being that game-changing. I think on all the real important votes, you guys came to a consensus. There was a descending vote every now and then, and that's a good thing, because that descending vote was probably representing a lot of constituents in the city who also had a descending vote. So to hear the fact that, you know, there was somebody speaking always for another opinion was a great thing. I want you to also, I think all of us, we have a big date coming up on December the 6th. It's been reported that the Supreme Court might be letting us know if they're going to hear the Boise case. They won't hear on December the 6th, but if they at least say, we're going to hear that, you know, we're going to hear that case, I think it would really relieve a ton of issues that we have. Also, there's a little, you know, talk about being, you know, volunteers, and all the time you spend, I had no idea, it's always started coming to the council meetings, how many committees you sit on, and boards you sit on, that just a time far that exceeds this, and I think there's a little bird that's been going on, maybe my friend Ryan Bork will speak on it, but you guys are completely undercompensated compared to other cities our size, and I think there's going to be a little bit of movement here to see if we can rectify that, and I hope the community all supports that. So that's going to be coming up, and like I say, let's keep our fingers crossed on December the 6th, that's going to make your jobs much easier, and it's been nice, we've already seen a couple of olive branches come out here tonight, very early on, and thank you for that, and let's go get them. Thank you very much.
Next item is the toll road update.
I don't have any updates, Councilwoman Ferguson?
I don't either.
Mr. Bork. And I just want to, Ryan, before you get going, I think sometimes when we say there's no updates, folks might jump to the conclusion that nothing is happening. I can assure you, a lot is happening, but right now, we just can't unfortunately make an announcement on it yet, so I don't want there to be any confusion there. Mr. Bork, please.
The joy of being on this side of the dais is I can make lots of noise on behalf of residents, and make lots of comments, and give lots of updates. If you want to go ahead and go to the next slide. So both of the scoping meetings for the TCA have now passed, those were the public forums, one held in Mission Viejo, one down in San Juan Capistrano. So it is still open for public comment, that has now been moved to 5:00 PM on January 8th of 2019. I didn't put it in my slide, which I should have, but that's what happens when you do a PowerPoint from your phone. The email, and I'll make this clear, is scoping@sctre.org. So scoping, S-C-O-P-A-N-G, at s-c-t-r-e.org. So all public comments can also be mailed, you can look at the TCA's website, but email is just as effective. They did have a court reporter, a stenographer, over at the two other meetings, so if you missed those, there's not much else, I think, that you can do. Did want to mention, it seemed like I was going into an Apple Store during the scoping meeting. I mean, there were greeters, and it was just all wonderful, and all these stations, and, you know, one thing that was a bit misleading to me is, you know, these giant maps that they had of all the planned routes. So they had a couple small satellite images that were kind of off to the side of the wall, and then there were these really large, you know, two, three times the size, large maps, that basically just have these pretty lines going down the 5 and the 241, down to the 5. But what they don't mention, and it's even hard to see on the satellite maps, is that it cuts through our neighborhoods, and we really aren't a city that was built with the planning and infrastructure to accommodate a toll road cutting through town. And I would expand that, even though I don't live there, to Rancho Mission Viejo, as far as the Beltway option that has been suggested. I will say something that was pretty harsh is, you know, in that meeting, I had other people around me, and the TCA was specifically blaming Kathy Ward in quote-unquote "our city" and "our city council" for the Beltway options, and that they said that, oh, those wouldn't even be on the table if it wasn't for our city, which I know I did talk to Kathy, and I adamantly agree with her that that is not the case, and did some more research into that, but I do think that's unfair, that the TCA, as officials from the TCA, the lead environmental engineer, is telling the story that, oh, we only have these issues because it's your city's fault, even though most people don't know, and they didn't mention it, that we have pending litigation against the TCA, as well as our new amended complaint, and as well as AB 1273 that limits the TCA's planning authority. So we've got Senator Pat Bates and Bill Bro, we've got a lot of people on limiting them. So make sure you send an email, I'd say option one, which is no option, and yes, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. That's all the speaker cards I have on toll road.
Next item is an update on homeless issue.
Before we get to the speakers, where's Ms. Smith at? So I want to make an announcement. You know, just really quickly to recap, back in May, we had effectively an emergency situation down in North Beach. We had a gentleman that was assaulted. I saw Daryl earlier, Mr. McFann. Mr. McFann intervened thankfully, and that gentleman didn't get too badly injured, but we took action at that time in compliance with Martin v. Boise, and I can say in compliance now, because that lawsuit ended exactly as we thought it would, which was with the dismissal. But we took action, and we made the best of a very bad situation, both under Ninth Circuit authority and with resources and all of that, and we told the residents of Sea Summit at that point in time, I know because I was there, along with city manager James Maksinoff, that it would be a temporary solution, and we meant that, and we continued to work through that. As we've progressed through the summer, everybody saw it spike to 70, we took action to limit it to San Clemente only, and since then, through the county's efforts, through our efforts, through the efforts of Mercy House, and now CityNet, the numbers at the encampment have been slowly dwindling, and I realize that some of those folks have gone elsewhere, but a very large portion of them have either been sent back to their homes with help from the city, or have moved on of their own volition. So we now have four or five people that are at the camp. We think that we're going to be able to place two more of those people, at least, is that two? Two more of those people this week into housing, and we think by the end of the week, and possibly next week, we'll be able to place all of those individuals with housing. So it no longer makes any financial sense to keep that encampment open, and so effective Thursday, that encampment is going to be closed. Sorry, Thursday and next week. Thank you. So to be very clear, Thursday, a week from this Thursday. And, you know, that was a decision that was a matter of time, as we said before, it was temporary. I want to make very clear, it had nothing to do with lawsuits, it had nothing to do with Coastal Commission, it had everything to do with a promise we made to our community that was a temporary solution while we looked at other solutions. So I'm proud to say, we've gotten to the point now where we're going to be closing that encampment, and in conjunction with that, we'll have another announcement later on, but before we get up here and get blasted by some of you, I thought I would let you know where we were headed. So we've heard you all along, it has not fallen on deaf ears, I wish to God I could write a novel on how complex this issue is, because I feel like I could make a lot of money on it, but we thank you for your patience, and as a council, I want to make clear that this was unanimous. We were all on lockstep every step of the way on this, and worked together very well to make sure we did the best for this community, and there was spirited debate, and I think we got to the right result in the end, and so I thank you again for your patience. So with that, Mr. Malamud, followed by Daryl McFann, followed by Mike Ray.
You took away my thunder, because I was going to ask for all those things to happen. So I was going to ask you to close it, and I was going to ask you to close it immediately, but I can deal with a week from Thursday. So all I'll say is thank you. I'd love to know when you made that decision, whether you made it in closed or open session, but we can leave that for another time. I would say that for the residents around there, I think it's helpful that in the future we do two things. One is we don't open another homeless temporary shelter at all that the city runs. If a charity wants to run it, and we want to donate the line, I'm okay, but we shouldn't be involved in any more lawsuits over how we're running that property. And two, it should be in the SB 2 zone, not near residences. So with that, I'll say just thank you to the council for taking really good action.
Thank you, Mr. Malamud. Daryl McFann, followed by Mike Ray, and then Rick Leffler.
Well, good evening, Mayor Dan Bain. That feels good to say so. Welcome, Jean James, and Ms. Laura, and Ms. Kathy, councilwomen. It's really a pleasure to be up here, and I'm going to try not to put anybody on blast. I really wanted to come and just say, this looks really nice to see a balanced council, and with a few minutes left, I just want to ask a few questions without answers coming back. I know that there was on the agenda to try and deal with the platform at North Beach, and I thought that there was a resolution to actually require tickets, or to be waiting in line for tickets, and since then, the platform has become home again to so many. Now, there was a picture posted the other day of a man who was not from this town with his child, and he had to step over people, and he was so frightened, he asked a few of the women, would they keep his child at their car while he purchased the ticket? And the photograph was just unbelievable, to see that, and to see somebody from not in this town buying a ticket frightened. I don't know, and I'm trusting you guys with everything, I'm learning patience, because as soon as I get so exasperated, you guys have already been planning and have action in place. So I always feel a little silly right afterward, like, ooh. Jean, we're going to try and work on getting you a bigger chair, okay? That's up for... That's a promise. I don't know what's happening down at the beach to allow all the tents, and we're told, hey, just email us, show us a picture that they're there, we all know they're there, and they're there continuously. What's happening is when two are allowed, seven more show up, and when seven are allowed, seven more show up, and it just becomes a tumbling block, and I don't know, I'm confident that the platform is going to get handled. The problem is, I have a heart where, when it's pouring down rain, I don't wish anybody to be out in the rain, anywhere, anytime. It makes my heart really grieve with, what do we do? Can we open something up temporarily so people aren't just standing in the pouring rain? And if that's the case, what about the man who brought his child up there and was so afraid, he asked total strangers to keep an eye on his child? I'm not sure about that, I'm trusting you guys, that you guys are working on something, that maybe it's already been worked on, and it's just going to be enacted. I don't know what we're going to do about the beach, I just wonder if the citizens in town said, let's have a sleepover on the beach. Would it be okay if we built a tent and had fires on the beach? I don't know, I just, I'm looking forward to solutions, and I know you guys will. Thank you for doing such a good job for this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Daryl. Mike Ray, followed by Rick Leffler, and then Michelle Brooks.
Good evening, council. Before I begin my comments, I wanted to welcome Jean James as our newest member of the city council, and congratulate Dan Bain as being our new mayor, and Laura Ferguson as being our new mayor pro tem. So congratulations to everybody. I'm hopeful with this mandate that Jean received from the voters, the council will now make significant progress on the very important issues facing our city. At a previous city council meeting, Mayor Dan Bain, pro tem at the time, asked for solutions regarding the growing vagrant situation that is having a negative impact on the safety and quality of life for the citizens of San Clemente. Over the past several years, we've seen many engaged and frustrated citizens come before the city council and recommend serious, common-sense solutions to address the growing vagrant crisis facing San Clemente, such as hiring additional OCSD deputies, providing a no-smoking ban, enforcing our anti-camping ordinance, and ending financial support to organizations such as Mercy House and FAM that act as magnets and enablers. And while I agree with many of the proposed solutions, after closely watching this serious problem grow and become more dangerous in San Clemente, and seeing how other local beach cities like Laguna, Newport, Manhattan, and Seal Beach, all cities with their own police departments, have aggressively and effectively addressed the homeless crisis in their cities, I've now come to the obvious conclusion that if we continue to contract with OCSD for our police services, nothing will change, and the problem will continue to grow and get worse. Now, I don't say this lightly, as I have a lot of respect and admiration for Lieutenant Manhart and the deputies who patrol our city. However, if Sheriff Barnes and his leadership team persist with their policies that favor the homeless over the public, tying the hands of his deputies in the field, we'll have no choice but to look for other options. And what solidified my decision is when I learned that Sheriff Barnes will not allow his deputies to enforce anti-camping laws in cities that have a shelter and have available beds. So even if we added 20 new deputies and had a shelter with available beds, OCSD still won't be allowed to enforce our anti-camping ordinance. Given this surprise and unfortunate reality, I believe we have two options. We could form our own San Clemente Police Department, or we could work with San Juan and Dana Point to form a tri-city South Orange County Police Department. Based on budgetary constraints experienced by all three cities, the close proximity, and our common public safety and quality of life issues, I recommend the city council begin working with our neighboring cities to develop a plan that would take control of our public safety away from the bureaucrats in Santa Ana and bring it back to the local level where it belongs. This is the only way San Clemente will be able to enforce its anti-camping and other public safety and quality of life ordinances currently on the books. If we don't take this bold aggressive step, taking control of our own destiny, and going on the offensive versus being on the defensive, we all know how this movie's going to end. You just have to look up the coast at cities like Venice Beach, Santa Monica, Santa Barbara, or San Francisco, to see what the future holds for San Clemente if we don't act now and act decisively. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Next is Rick Leffler, followed by Michelle Brooks, and then Ms. Smith.
Yeah, it's great news about closing the campsite. It doesn't make any sense to have three or four people there and pay however, whatever it is we're paying. But there is an issue that I'm concerned about, and I know, just, you know, coming in with the previous statements that were made, is I was under the impression that Judge Percy Anderson threw out a lawsuit with the opinion that having a campground, or at least having a place temporary, we could put people, allowed still the OCSD to arrest for tents overnight, not camping overnight. So when you close the campground and we have no place to put these people, I'm concerned now that North Beach, once that word is out, that there's no place to put them, what's to keep them from just coming in and putting all their tents in, anywhere they want now? Because that's not, we're not complying with Martin versus Boise at all now, if we have no place to put them, and to be frank, I'm not sure how much proactivity we were getting from the OCSD. Like, not because of our local deputies, but because of the policies of Sheriff Barnes. And he's going to be real busy now with all of his problems he's having with the corruption and the issues he's having, maybe he won't even have time to look at our policies anymore, he's going to be so busy. But it's a little disappointing being optimistic now that we don't have at least what we call a shelter. I just, I'm just really concerned that all of a sudden now the tents are going to pop up. Maybe you could have, I know it's not totally informed, but maybe the city attorney could give an opinion about that, just to let the poor citizens know here what we have to look forward to, or if you have a contingency plan, you should let us know soon, because that's going to be a big concern with people, is now that we don't have that, it's just open ground again for the camping. And also to tail in on, at some point... And also to tail in on, at some point, and I've talked about this, but I'm, and I'm still not a proponent, but we need to look at the feasibility of having a local police department again. I can tell you, I have experience in working at a very large police department, and also a fairly small one. And it is feasible. It is feasible to have. Otherwise, cities like Hermosa Beach with 20,000 people couldn't have one. It is feasible. And I'm not saying that we should move on doing it, but if the sheriff finally comes out and says, and let's, let's say the Supreme Court says, we're not going to hear Martin versus Boise, you're just, all you people are on your own. We're going, is Sheriff Barnes going to suddenly stand up? I, I'm not optimistic. So, at some point, we need to look at that, at least the feasibility of doing that, in case we have to have a plan B. So, I'm, I'm happy that we're closing the campground. In another way, I have a lot of trepidation about what's going to happen. So, if any of you could help us with that, just to ease that concern, that'd be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Leffler. Next is Michelle Brooks, followed by Susan Smith.
Welcome, council. I'm happy to see a full five seats tonight. Welcome to Jean James. I haven't spoken in a while because I haven't had any solutions to offer, so I've just been listening. But tonight, I have an observation that I wanted to share. Last week, my family traveled on a road trip 900 miles north to the Redwoods. We stopped at Ocean Beach so my husband could surf. My kids were hungry, so we walked to a little cafe right across the street from the sand. As we were walking, right in front of homes, we came across a huge pile of splattered human poop. There was a wadded up paper towel and a plastic bag in the mix. I grabbed my kids and froze, looking around expecting to see everybody else stopping, reacting, and calling someone to report this. Not one other person stopped. I was shocked that everybody in that town just walked right by, stepping over it and not even flinching, as though this is our new norm. My anti-confrontational husband told me I could not go into a town until then they are running it wrong, so I had to keep my mouth shut. But I don't have to here in my town. I refuse to ever get used to this or think that this is an acceptable new norm. This is all over our state, but we have to protect our little corner of the world. Needless to say, I didn't spend my money in that city. Some people say it is someone's free will to be homeless, but it is my right as a taxpaying citizen to be able to walk down the street, go to a park, go to the beach, or buy a ticket to ride the train without fear of stepping in poop, without having to step over someone sleeping in a sleeping bag, and without fear of my children stepping on needles. This cannot be our new norm. There has to be more that we can do. If it is someone's free will to choose to be homeless, is it not our duty as human brothers and sisters to see when someone is unable to make the best decision for themselves? If someone is choosing to sleep on the sidewalk, does that not mean that they need help? Sleeping on the sidewalk is not okay, and it never should be an acceptable way to let someone live. We seem to be chasing the problem in circles. We cleared out North Beach, moved them to the lot. We cleared that out, they moved to the park. Now we chose, now we close a brand new children's park, and they move back to North Beach. And this speech isn't directed to all of you up there. It's to all of Californians to wake up, we have to do better. So, are we going to be the people who just walk by the poop? Or are we going to be the ones who stop and say, this is not okay? As my dear friend says, if not you, then who? So, let's get a team of minds together and figure this out. I'm here and I'm willing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Susan Smith.
Thank you for the announcement. And congratulations, Jean. That's so awesome. Mayor, congratulations. Laura, mayor pro tem, congratulations. And Kathy, I want to congratulate you because you haven't been bullied lately, and that's nice to see. I just wanted to remind you also, oh, and thanks again for voting to close the camp in case I haven't said that already. But I do also mirror some of Rick's sentiments and Michelle's sentiments. I mean, it is, it's not that, you know, it's such a complex problem. But I do expect that things might get worse before it gets better. We've been playing the shell game. So, one of the things that I would like to request is maybe some extra enforcement, maybe some park rangers. And as a reminder, we've got, I mean, we know they're moving around. And Dan, you and I have talked about a drone and finding them all over the place in the canyons, in the preserve. And I just wanted to remind you that nesting season is coming up. January is when the red-tailed hawks start nesting. And then official nesting season for Sea Summit at Marblehead Preserve begins on February 15th. And that's for the endangered animals like the California natt catcher and the burrowing owls. That's their time to breed. And we started with as few as three pairs of natt catchers, and there's only 10% of that scrub left in the world. So they really depend on it. And since I've last been in the trail, there's over 100 manmade trails that have been made into the preserve. And if we could just, I mean, I know it's tough. I know there's a lot of stuff going on, but we spend so much money on that preserve through mellow roos and the bonds for the water retention basins and just the whole biologists, the habitat, and everything else. If we could just go the extra mile just to protect it a little bit more. Because I know we're going to be playing that shell game, and until we figure out how to contain the situation and make it better for everyone, then it's going to be a challenge that we all have to deal with. And so, thank you guys for your attention and your time. And I would love to be a voice on the homeless committee if you guys need some help. I do have some pretty serious experience with dealing with some of them. But it's not something I love to do. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. No more homeless cards on the, really, really quickly, to address Mr. McFann's questions, the platform at North Beach. We did adopt, last council meeting, two ordinances. One of them dealing with foresighted tents that are no longer allowed, assuming that the second reading tonight is approved. Doesn't allow foresighted tents, was it two or, two or less sighted?
Right.
In parks and on the beach.
And, and in transportation.
And in transportation. And also requiring the second ordinance being a requirement that folks that are on the platform for Metrolink Station need to be there for a transportation purpose, which is defined by the code, and I will not try to redefine that. But the way that those work is they become effective, just so everyone's aware, 30 days after the second reading, which would be tonight if it's approved. So, once 30, 30 days happens after tonight, then folks can start enforcing those ordinances, which is why you haven't seen enforcement. Now, we have sent folks code enforcement and OCSD to the train platform and elsewhere. The tents on the beach, we have a curfew from 12 to 4, which is enforced. The deputies are going down and enforcing that curfew. What happens, though, is folks leave their tents, which we will now be having code enforcement address as well. So we are aware of it. And to Mr. Leffler's point, yes, there are contingency plans, and if you give me five more minutes, we'll announce them.
Members of the audience who wish to address council on matters that are within the jurisdiction of the city of San Clemente but not separately listed on the agenda, may do so during the oral communications portion of the meeting. Speakers may address council once during either oral communications part one or part two. A total time limitation of 30 minutes is allocated for oral communications part one, with each speaker being allotted three minutes, which should give his or her presentation.
Okay, our first speaker for oral communication is Brad Malamud, followed by Wayne Eggleston, and then Ryan Bork.
I'm glad I'm before Wayne. I want to congratulate Jean, Dan, and Ms. Ferguson, Laura, for your positions and your election. And I do also hope that we can make this less acrimonious and I'll try to get along. What I want to talk to tonight is simple. I want to talk about BB and K legal bills. And I want to ask that this council either agendize or just approve providing one set of bills for the public to review, and that's for the district election correction. There's no attorney-client privilege. The legal work was done for the city clerk, not for the city itself. It's never going to happen again. A mistake on a ballot initiative. So, I don't know why this city is hiding this. I've asked for it for now two years, I believe. And the city council has never taken a vote, as I know of. So I'm asking tonight to either vote or agendize, providing us a review of this bill in an unredacted format, because there's nothing to protect. And if, as we've been told repeatedly by Scott Smith and James Matchinoff, these bills have been triple reviewed, there is certainly nothing to hide from our citizens. I'd also like the city to agendize replacing the city attorney through an RFP or otherwise. Because our bills, when we, five years ago, four, not even five years ago, when the city chose to go with BB and K from 20 proposals, the reason was is we were concerned the retan had gone to an astronomical 600,000 per year in legal bills. Well, Scott showed that, that he, those guys were pikers. We're now spending over $2 million a year in his firm, approximately. So we need to get the city attorney that oversees those bills from the outside law firms to get a handle on it. Because I would submit that Scott Smith can't watch his own hen house. And James Matchinoff, as much as he tries, as hard as he tries, simply not qualified to review legal bills. And I say that as a person who for 30 years has reviewed legal bills for a living. And it's not just something you can look at a bill and understand. So I'm asking you to agendize those things. And I just, out of curiosity, unless I missed it, what happened to the RFP for the hospital? Is that before us tonight? I don't think it is. But it was told that we were going to return that tonight for us to review. How, how long could that take? Why isn't it here? And what's going on? Please agendize those two things, and I thank you.
Wayne Eggleston, followed by Ryan Bork, and then Beth Apodaca.
Congratulations, Jean, Dan, and Laura. And Kathy, thank you for your fortitude all of these years there. I'm here to announce a Christmas gift for San Clemente tonight.
Two in one night.
The historic and iconic Miramar Theater and Bowling Alley have been sold and the escrow closed. As you know, the Miramar has been closed to the public since 1992 and has remained empty and very blighted since that time. I wish to thank the following for their professional experience during the entitlement process. Jim Pett, Jim Holloway and myself took the lead in this entitlement process in 2017. And I want to thank the following. Jim Petches and Amber Gregg, who were former senior planners here in San Clemente, the San Clemente Chamber of Commerce, San Clemente Historical Society, the Planning Commission Design Review, who are very professional and experienced people, as, as well as the planning commissioners, former and current city council members, Laura Doncheck, Tim Brown, Kathy Ward, Chris Hamm, and Bob Baker. And special thanks goes to Jane Mackenshaw and Cecilia Gilardi Dale for their leadership. Now, here, that, that the city is not business, we, you know, we hear that the city is not business friendly or responsive. But they could not, this city could not have been more business friendly, professional, or timely with this approval process. One historic area, era is now closing, and a new one is opening with an adaptive reuse of a treasured historic local structure. Stay tuned, as further details will be forthcoming regarding the new owners and their plans for this iconic building. For once, good, positive news. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Wayne. Appreciate it. Congratulations for all your hard work on that. Appreciate it. Ryan Bork, followed by Beth Apodaca, and then Joe Janis.
Now that Jean's here, I can tone it down, so I'm only going to talk twice tonight instead of, you know, three or four times. We'll get to that in just a second. I'll start with a few get to business items. For one, I'd like to see the council take a vote to agendize putting an RFP for outside legal counsel. I just think, based on what I've learned in discussions that I've had with folks, that it's a pretty substantial sum of money. I kind of put my argument forward to council, and I won't take any time to repeat that today. But I do think it's wise to do that. It doesn't mean we replace them, doesn't mean they're doing a bad job. But, you know, two plus million dollars is a lot of money. And, you know, four or five years of not getting any RFPs on it, maybe it's time to do that. Another item, I hope that you guys can vote and agendize, and, and I won't go into details, but presenting Eric Sun's performance review to council. I believe that James' performance review goes to council. I'm not sure if Eric's actually goes to council, or if that's possible. But I'll leave that comment there. I want to talk about something positive now that we've got. I'm very happy that all of you guys are up here and how hard you've had to work and how hard you do work. And, you know, we have multiple council members that don't have earned income outside of being on council. I will say that nobody up here would admit to say that they did this because they thought it was going to be a windfall of profits and incomes. But I did want to bring it up. I know, Dan, you and I went back and forth. I think from the best guess, Scott, maybe you could look this up, is that the, because of the size of the city, our state mandated maximum, I think, is something like $500 a month. One thing that we're allowed to do is offer expense reimbursements. So I was actually proposing that we do a $500 monthly plus a $400 expense reimbursement. And then I also put it out, when looking at compensation amongst hundreds of other cities, is offering health insurance. Now, we currently do that, that you guys can get onto the same plan that the employees have. But that is something that is at your own cost and be quite substantial, even though that's offered to, offered to employees. I think for the work that you guys do to be in line with other cities is a right step 5% increases to get you in line with other cities, because 500 bucks isn't going to do it. But you do legally have to put it on the agenda and go through the brain damage every year to make those increases happen. So obviously, what's happened is nobody's had the gall to step forward, and it's been left this way for, you know, decades and decades, 20-plus years. So, none of you have asked for this, so I hope that a lot of us that have talked with each other have kind of brought this forward, so we hope that that's something that's helpful because you guys are grossly underpaid. Yeah, so I would just say, vote on it for cost of living adjustments, but we'd love to see that on the agenda for you guys, because we really appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Bork. Beth Apodaca, followed by Joe Janis, and then Tony Rubellino.
Welcome, Jean. It's good to see you up there. Mayor Bane, council members, my name is Beth Apodaca. I'm the director of the H. Wells Dorothy Visser Senior Center here in San Clemente. I'm here tonight on behalf of my staff and all the seniors in San Clemente to thank the city for installing the beautiful wrought iron gates on the front of the center, which you really can't see in that photo. Hey, it's, it's a Samsung. What can I say? They really are beautiful. As many know, we've had problems for the last few years, like many others in the community, with people camping on the porch. It's not so much the camping as the moving them every morning and cleaning up what is left behind. These gates are just one more step in taking back the senior center for our seniors. As you can see, the designs of the gates, if you could really see them, you have to drive by. They were installed like when the building was first built. They don't, look, the city did an amazing job of doing a custom design, so they blend in perfectly. So most people don't know those, those gates and everything weren't there originally. I would also like to give a big thank you to the city's maintenance department. They do a fantastic job and are very friendly and always there to help when we need help. And I want to thank all of you for what you do to help improve our city. So on behalf of all of us at the senior center and the seniors, we want to thank you for taking this major step. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Janis, followed by Tony Rubellino.
Jean, from one veteran to another, I want to congratulate you for making it on council. You know, I think in the last six months, you've had more personal attacks on you than your whole time in the military. And I think it's pretty sad. And I think a good leader, and you guys have proved it to me tonight, you know about a problem before we come up and talk. I think we had, he had talked about it, and you took about everything away that I was going to say. So I'd like to ask all of you out there that write letters to the editors and come up this podium, that maybe we start trying to be a little nicer to people. We attack not only people who have lost the election, and we keep beating him and beating him and beating him. You know, I didn't vote for the young man that ran, but I don't think he's as bad of a person as people make him out to be, or as people try and make you guys out to be. So I ask that we all come together and get rid of all this political nonsense. We have a lot of really tough issues we have to solve here. And I thank you both for saying what you said tonight. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Joe. Mr. Rubellino.
Good evening, council. A while ago, I had the opportunity to go through receipts for City Hall. And specifically, what I was looking for were receipts detailing council lunches. What are council lunches? Council lunches? Council lunches are taxpayer-funded meals by us, the San Clemente residents and taxpayers, for James Matchinoff, Eric Sun, Cecilia, and I believe Scott is on there quite a few times. So, you have collectively four people who are making north of $1 million, and we are funding their council lunches. So, let's go and just look at a few of the receipts, just so people can hear exactly what I'm coming across. This one's February 6, 2018, Antoine's Council Lunch. James, Eric, and Cecilia are listed as the recipients of a $58.66 lunch. However, when you look at the receipt, there are four meals there. So, there's three people listed, but four meals, and I'm sure somebody's not eating twice, somebody's just not being listed. So, we'll go to June 20, 2018, Sun Dry Tomato Council Lunch. James, Eric, and Cecilia listed again. The total for the council lunch was $104.67. However, when you look at the receipt, you'll find four meals. Again, is somebody eating two meals, or is there a fourth person that's not being accounted for? Now, Scott's name pops up here later as we go into 2019, and the pattern is basically the same thing over and over. Council lunches happen on city council meeting day, so we're having those twice a month. And while this is a drop in the bucket compared to what Brad Malamute has caught of the transactions where the general fund is being used to balance the budget, but what this is, is a big middle finger from city management to the San Clemente taxpayers and residents, that we don't care what you have to say or who you are, we're going to keep doing what we want to do. And does anybody here think that these four making over a million dollars should be paid for, having meals paid for by us?
No.
No. So, in the interest of fiscal responsibility and accountability, I'm asking for council to agendize this topic, eliminate council lunches, and also I'd like to take a look at council dinners. Now, we all know that you all put tremendous effort into the city, the majority of you, that you deserve to have a nice meal on council evenings. However, I feel like there should be some sort of limitation on exactly what the cost is of that per person, some sort of responsibility, some checks and balances put in place. So, council, let's go ahead and start business rolling here and start with this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't have any other speaker cards?
No. Okay. Could we have a motion to waive reading in full of all resolutions and ordinances?
So moved. Second.
So, a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Passes 4-0.
Okay. Close session.
Before you get to close sessions, so, I'm going to read this verbatim, and we will hang on to this, Brad. The action would be to add, so I'm going to make a motion for consideration to add an item to the agenda, which requires immediate action in light of the announcement that we've made tonight about the closing of the encampment. So, for consideration, the action would be to add the following to tonight's agenda, and then to adjourn the meeting to Tuesday, next Tuesday, where the item can be written with urgency findings and then fully considered and adopted at the adjourned meeting, meaning it would be at a noticed public meeting next Tuesday, a special meeting. An urgency ordinance of the city council of the city of San Clemente repealing ordinances numbers 1673, 1674, and 1675, and amending chapter 8.86 of the municipal code to prohibit the erection of tents for camping on public policy, uh, excuse me, on public property, except between the hours of 5:00 PM and 10:00 AM. Conventional regular ordinance with the same terms would be presented to the council at first reading on December 17, 2019, as part of its regular meeting. So, I'm, I'm making the motion to have that added to the agenda tonight. Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Okay, a motion by me, a second by council member James. All in favor? Aye. Passes 4-0.
Okay, close session. Report, city attorney.
Uh, yeah, the, the council voted to defend a recent lawsuit filed that parallels the federal lawsuit filed by Emergency Shelter Coalition versus San Clemente and Housing is a Human Right of Orange County. The city will be filing a response that parallels exactly the response filed in the federal case. These cases overlap and, I think, contain the very same issues from the case that was dismissed previously by the federal court.
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion unless council staff or the public requests removal of an item for separate discussion. I don't think we have any, do we? We have not received any requests for removal.
Okay, do you have a motion to move?
I have a couple to pull.
Okay.
6B3, 6B3 and 6I.
Okay, any others? Mr. James, from the plenty of items? Okay. So, with that, I'll make a motion to move the remainder.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 4-0 to remove the remainder. So, 6B3.
Okay, council, 6B3 is the planning commission minutes. And I'm referring to page 2 of 6B3. Yeah. This is 8A, the public hearing for 610 Camino de los Maras. That is the Stater Brothers Plaza, and I would like to call this item up for council deliberation. It refers to Stater Brothers coming in and asking for a sign exception permit. They want to do a new sign, but the planning commission actually is giving them a new master sign program. And because this is in the gateway of San Clemente, and it's also the only other commercial unit that has signs on the freeway, we've made the outlet mall do bronze lettering, and that's our, what our actual code says now. And so, if there's going to be a new master sign program, I think the city council should be deliberating on that and let the public hear it.
Okay.
So, I'm calling it off.
Support for that?
I support that.
Yes, yep, I support as well. Okay.
So, who was the second on that?
So, Mr. James, council member James is the second. So, motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 4-0.
Yeah, could we have a motion to receive and file the balance of those minutes?
Oh, I'll make the motion. Sorry about that.
Okay, all second. Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 4-0.
6I. Is Tom Bonnig here? So, this is, this is on our trolley that we talked about, I think, at the, maybe the last meeting. Hi, Tom. I just wanted to add, and if the council concurs, that when you go through this grant and you're looking at everything for next year, that you look at the data on all our stops and maybe make some recommendations of how our program should be tweaked when you bring it back to us.
Okay. Yeah, we can do that, so we'll, we'll be happy to provide a follow-up report to do that and get your direction on any changes before the summer 2020 operating season, if that's your desire.
Just to have staff come back with, when they do that, to come back with the stops, if they have any recommendations of anything that should be tweaked, so that we ultimately are successful with our program.
Okay, I'll second that motion. So, a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
So, that is in addition to the staff recommendation, correct? The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed 10 minutes, and public testimony not to exceed three minutes per speaker. Following closure of the public hearing, the city council will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. The first public hearing is a continued public hearing to consider a city-initiated amendment to San Clemente Municipal Code Title 17, the zoning ordinance regarding the regulation of secondhand dealers, thrift stores.
Good evening, mayor, members of the city council. Gabriel Perez, your city planner. This item is to consider standards for secondhand dealers, also known as thrift stores. City council initiated this back in 2016. The city council realized that thrift stores weren't defined in the municipal code, and there weren't specific standards related to thrift stores. There are about 12 thrift stores that exist in the city today, and we've allowed for those thrift stores, and we've considered them similar to general retail businesses in the city. So, we worked with the city attorney on the ordinance. The ordinance would not apply to existing businesses. It would only apply to existing businesses if they decided to expand, or if the use lapsed for more than 365 days. This is what the ordinance would do. It would add definitions for thrift stores. It would also establish operational standards that would include a security plan be prepared, unobscured windows, adequate lighting, and exterior merchandise display regulations. This would also restrict thrift stores to the commercial zones in the city, as well as the mixed-use zones, and would require minor conditional use process that would require zoning administrator approval. These are the zones that thrift stores would be allowed in. It's the neighborhood commercial, community commercial zones, and the mixed-use zones. Staff did hold a stakeholder meeting with thrift store owners on August 21, and identified what the regulations, the impacts would be on new businesses, and received comment. And one of the things that we did change in the ordinance, staff was previously considering a distance requirement from surrounding residential zones and other sensitive uses of 100 feet, and a distance requirement from other thrift stores of 300 feet. That was actually removed from the ordinance and no longer before the city council. So, that's the end of my report. The recommendation is for the city council to determine that the ordinance is exempt from CEQA and to introduce the ordinance. That's the end of my report. Happy to answer any questions.
Good, thank you, Gabriel. Are there any technical questions of staff before we open the public hearing?
No technical questions.
Okay, I have, I have one quick technical question. So, right now, under the, the code, they're basically being interpreted as just general retail stores, which are permitted as of right. So, do most other cities separate, you know, just retail stores that are effectively, you know, new merchandise versus secondhand or thrift stores?
Some of the other cities we researched, they'll identify thrift stores, and some of them will just allow them by right, or require like a conditional use permit for them.
Okay, so, but we're, we're then segregating out like antique stores, for example, which are effectively secondhand retail. Is there any reason for that differentiation between just thrift stores and antique stores?
Um, no, just we thought that the thrift stores should be differentiated from the antique stores, because they operate differently. So, in other cities, they actually identify antique stores separately than a thrift store. So, we thought it made sense to do that here.
Mr. Perez?
Gabriel, don't you think that the difference between an antique store and, say, a thrift store is the, the issue of donations? Because the public donates to thrift stores, all of the merchandise.
Uh, yeah, most of the thrift stores that we do have in the city...
I think that's a differentiation.
There, there are donations. At least two of the thrift stores I know that are in the city that are considered thrift stores right now, they actually, I would say, they, they, they get their merchandise and they actually pick it out, and they're actually not donating. So, they actually get it from another location, and those items are picked out by the owners.
So, for example, and just to fall on this point, and this is minutious, so I apologize to the public, this is probably incredibly boring, but for goodwill, for example, if they have a trailer where you're getting drop-offs and donations, what do we require for a goodwill trailer?
We don't have any requirements right now for those businesses. So, if a thrift store decided to come in today as a new business, then they would just need a business license from the city.
So, goodwill, for example, if there's a drop-off, I know there's one at a church, they're not required to get an MCUP or a CUP?
They're not required to do that.
Okay.
So, what a MCUP would do, it would allow code enforcement, planning to review the application, and if there's conditions that we would need them to apply, comply with, such as making sure there's no outside donations that are dropped off or dumped, perhaps that sorting takes place inside the building, we can make sure that happens.
Is that, is that happening now? So, if somebody drops off, what mechanisms do we have to enforce that they clean the area up or keep it clean?
The mechanisms would be co-compliance actions. So, you can't dump any kind of products outside.
So, we already have an enforcement mechanism already in place?
We do.
Okay. That, I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any speaker? I'm sorry, we do have a speaker card. You already gave it to me. Gina Borchers, Ms. Borchers?
Hi. My name's Gina Borchers, and I've been a resident of San Clemente for 33 years. And up until July of this year, I've also been an employee of the city. Now that I've retired, I'm a volunteer for two institutions in town. One of those is the Elks Lodge here, and I encourage everyone to become an Elks, because Elks are BPOE, best people on earth. And the other institution that I volunteer for is for Coral Thrift. That's one of the so-called thrift stores that fall under this amendment, and I'm, I'd like to speak on behalf of them today, because I'd like to request that the zoning amendment regarding thrift stores be removed from consideration entirely. Already, the thrift stores are really, have been accidentally lumped in with what the original amendment contained, which was smoke shops, pawnbrokers, cash, check cashers. And of course, thrift shops are completely different. So, already, you've heard Gabriel say that, that they've reduced the scope of the amendment for thrift shops in that they're no longer required to be a certain distance from parks or playgrounds or schools, and also that they no longer are going to be considered to have a concentration of thrift stores, not be allowed within 300 feet, which, of course, we really appreciate, because we kind of have a thrift store row in San Clemente that's really famous and well-known. I'd like to say that I think this zoning amendment with regard to the thrift stores is a solution in need of a problem. It's not the thrift stores that are a problem. Coral Thrift has been in existence since 1964, 55 years without any type of problems. Even the city's code enforcement manager has stated in one of the reports that I read online that there is insufficient code enforcement data related to existing thrift store use to warrant additional regulation. The, I wanted to make sure also that you understood why having a thrift store in town is such a benefit to us. Since 1964, just our little Coral Thrift Store has donated over $3 million in scholarships to our town's students. And I wanted to make sure I got the numbers right, so I actually wrote down the $3 million and realized I had some zeros missing. So, okay, I guess these zeros aren't so important. But what I wanted to tell you that's important is we are 100% volunteer-driven, we are 100% nonprofit, and any of these regulations can...
Thank you, Ms. Borchers. I can wrap it up.
...become burdensome to a volunteer-run institution.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are there any more speaker cards before I close the public hearing? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Any other comments, questions?
I have a question.
Council member Wayne?
About the Coral Thrift Shop. When I was the mayor two years ago, I went to the, the high school awards night and, for scholarships, and they were giving out that night in 2017, $31,000 scholarships. And I was amazed that...
$69,000 this year.
Okay, so, they have given more since then. So, we know, we, the longstanding Assistance League here has, has done a good job, and we recognize that. And so, you guys should get like some resolution or something soon. I think the mayor maybe should look into that. I think the mayor maybe should look into that, because you have done an outstanding job, and I know that the kids at the high school are so appreciative of it also, and they're very excited to get those scholarships.
She's saying?
Okay, good, I think that's a good idea. So, one thing that I would say is, it seems like there's still some perception and bad will about that we lumped these in with other uses, but that's why we removed it. I think you made that motion to do that. These recommendations have gone through the Sheriff's Department, and that's why the windows being open and all of that. And we didn't just come up with this on the fly and decide that we were going to target thrift shops. We were actually having an issue on the alleyway where the thrift shops were. It wasn't all of them, but it was some of them. And we found that we didn't have the tools because they personally weren't called out for. So if you think that Adam should come up here and talk about it, because code enforcement's here, we should probably clarify that. Because that's the whole reason why we came up and we put this on the agenda.
Yeah, before we invite Adam up, are there any other comments or questions?
I have a comment, if I may.
Mayor Protem Ferguson.
Thank you, Mayor Bain. Ms. Borchers had a great comment about how there haven't been an abundance of adverse impacts due to the thrift stores. And I had followed up recently with our city planner, and of the 12 thrift stores we have, there's been about 100 complaints over 20 years, so just a handful of complaints. So personally, I don't like making laws when we don't have problems in terms of health and safety issues for our community, and so I wanted to note that, that just creating more regulations when we don't need them is, you know, not a good practice to begin. So, thank you.
So, Adam? Sorry. You looked comfortable there, but real quickly.
Thank you, Mayor. It was comfortable, but I'm happy to speak.
So I think, just quickly, I think what both Councilmember Ward and I are both getting at is, you know, really is there a need in terms of enforcement? Does code enforcement have the ability to enforce if people are dropping things off or otherwise, as things stand? Or do we need this additional MCUP process?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this. We do need this, and the reason that we need this is for a few reasons. The first is that we have had, while not all of the thrift stores have been issues, we have had significant issues with a few of them. Last year, I had staff that spent probably 45 hours dealing with the Salvation Army down on Cascadita. That was a huge issue. We had a lot of public concern about that, and which rolls into the second issue, we're dealing with volunteer organizations. From an enforcement perspective, I would rather have new operators coming into the city set up to be compliant, rather than having to use code enforcement action against charitable organizations and take away from those $3 million that have been donated. It is significant staff time to clean up an issue that wasn't properly thought through from the beginning, and standards like this help us out. I don't think that the conditional use permit process is going to be such a burden that it will be detrimental to the development of this industry in the future, and it certainly won't affect the businesses that we have today, which we luckily have handled. The last thing I will say is that the use is specifically different than most other retail businesses, and that's that they do not have control over when their product is delivered. And it's not actually a problem with the operators. It's a problem with people who want to donate, maybe get there late, and now they're doing illegal dumping. And so part of our enforcement efforts are dealing with OCSD and trying to identify people who are illegally dumping, and I'd much rather see standards from the beginning that address those issues, rather than having to deal on the backend with these things.
So, question on that regard, and I'd asked Gabriel, is there a mechanism for code enforcement if there is illegal dumping to cite the business or cite the group that are illegally dumping? Is there the ability to do that? Because the concern that I have is if we have a couple of bad actors now, perhaps the more efficient way to deal with it, so we can address the current actors, because this ordinance does not address the current actors, is to look at some sort of an enforcement ordinance to deal with that, as opposed to imposing new conditions on businesses that may or may not have issues. And so, what I'm grappling with is it sounds like we do have a few bad actors, maybe the focus should be more on giving you more tools from a code enforcement perspective, as opposed to sort of more onerous conditions. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. I think there's a few ways to deal with this issue. I think that this is a good mechanism to do it. Like I said, it would be our preference not to take enforcement action against charitable organizations, so the more that we can do to help people set up a business in the proper way would address that issue.
So to that point, for a retail business that's permitted, and this may be a question more for Gabriel, is, you know, what do we make them do in terms of security? Because I know most new retail businesses have to have a security system, they have to have windows that are open, they have to have lighting outside, you know. What does this require that we're not already requiring of sort of regular retail businesses? Thank you, Adam, I appreciate that.
And can we go back to the previous slide where it addresses the security plan and the-
Yeah. You might know something about that, right?
So, you know, general retail stores that you see, they don't have to go through a conditional use permit process, or a minor conditional use permit process, they just get a business license. And so, there's not a mechanism for us to require the security plan, unless it's required in the code. Right now, there isn't requirement for general retail to submit security plans to the city.
So they're not required to have, I'm sorry, they're not required to have security cameras or anything like that?
Security cameras, not to my knowledge, no.
Okay. Councilman James, did you have a question?
No, not at this time.
Is there a motion?
Before we make a motion, I just want to make one other point, that this ordinance also limits them to certain areas where the staff and planning commission felt that they should go. And so, in places like Ocean View Plaza, a big retail center that's mostly retail, they would be not permitted in those sections. So that's kind of the importance of this resolution, in addition to some limited standards.
May I ask, Councilwoman Ward, you were here in, I believe it was late 2016, on council when this originated. The problem, right, the problem actors, so to speak, are they still problem actors? Are you aware?
No, I'm not aware, because I don't talk to code enforcement all the time, but I am aware that some, that one of the secondhand dealers wanted to branch out into other areas of the city. It didn't work out for them, but that's kind of one of the reasons why we looked at, we didn't think anyone would leave that area because it's so successful. And everybody kind of knows that the alley's there, and it works out for them. So, that's kind of part of it that came up. But no, we haven't followed up on that, because it's been making its way through and got hunted.
Excuse me, what is the problem that having a thrift store somewhere else in town? Like you mentioned Ocean View Plaza.
Because of the parking there. You've been there, how hard it is to find parking. So if you have people pulling up to the front of a store and wanting to cart big items through that parking lot into the center, into the doors, that would be an issue because it would be disruptive to the commercial center. So that's what I, why I think we talked about limiting them to the mixed-use areas-
This is how this came about?
...and the neighborhood commercial. It's mostly, I think it's basically El Camino Real, is it not? The neighborhood commercial, and isn't that all designations in El Camino Real? And Los Molinos?
Neighborhood commercial, there's mixed use, that it would be allowed, but it would be allowed on areas like the shopping centers that you're talking about, community commercial. So, it wouldn't be limited, it would actually be permitted in the same areas that they are today.
Okay, thank you.
Good. So, anyway, that's what we were looking at, is putting them in there. And to me, mixed use, what is CC?
Community.
Community commercial.
Community commercial, yeah.
Which is, give us an example of CC.
Yeah, that would be correct.
Okay. So, yeah, I thought initially we were limiting these out of there. So what, I guess I've got it wrong. We were limiting them, but allowing them to go in, but having standards in order to make sure that they are in a good spot. So I, I'm sorry, the length of time, I got it wrong.
I just have one more question for Mr. Perez. So did we deny a permit at the Ocean View Plaza for a thrift store?
Not, no.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. So, a charitable organization who's trying to do the right thing, we're going to hold them to a higher standard than we would a big-box discount retailer? From the conditional use permit perspective?
Yeah, there would be a higher standard with respect to the security plans and all the operational standards that I mentioned. Correct.
So, Gene, one thing that I would mention, Councilmember Ferguson found out that there was 100 complaints. They probably all came from that alleyway. All of the neighbors were up in arms over what was going on behind the stores. So that's how this got initiated.
That was 100 complaints over, I believe, 20 years, right, Mr. Perez?
Yeah, it was 100 complaints, but that also included the smoke shops and some of the other businesses that we were considering. So it was actually 41 complaints related to thrift stores.
Over two decades?
Over two decades, and that related to unpermitted signage, donations left outside and outdoor merchandise.
Okay, but not any health and safety matters. Okay, thank you.
Right.
Okay, so I'm going to move that we close debate and move the questions, so. Is there a motion?
So I'll make the motion that we find and determine that the ordinance is exempt from the requirements of CEQA pursuant to CEQA Guidelines Sections 15060(c) 2 and 3. First of all, and number two, do we have a vote on that, though, before we introduce the ordinance? So I'm moving staff recommendation.
Okay. Is there a second on that? Okay. So we can make the motion on your motion without a second, so we have a motion, no second, but I'll go ahead and ask for a vote, which we can do under Rosenberg's. All in favor?
Our policy requires a second.
So Rosenberg's, I think, is what we follow.
Yes, but when you adopted the council policy, which is Rosenberg's with these changes, one of the changes that council wanted was that motions had to have a second.
Okay, got it. So there's no second, so that motion fails. Is there an alternative motion?
No.
Okay, so I'm, I'll make the motion then, since I'll move that we effectively table this item, or perhaps just deny the ordinance altogether. And the justification that I would give is, I totally understand what the council was trying to do in 2016. I remember that project, it was at the old Crispin's spot. I remember it well. As I said last time, back in February, I wanted to see sort of the justification for differentiating thrift stores versus just regular retail or otherwise, and, you know, we had a 300-foot buffer, I think, back in February, and we found that that just really wasn't justifiable. And so in short, I just, I don't want to move forward with something that seems to be addressing a problem that it doesn't really address, which is existing stores that are bad actors. I'd rather focus on looking at code compliance to give Adam, and I usually side with you, Adam, but on this instance, I think we can look at different tools. So I think we're looking for a problem that doesn't exist. But I just wanted to thank Gabriel. Quickly, the planning commission that looked at this twice, your work was not wasted. I think we got to a spot where we could really evaluate it, so I appreciate that. So is there a second on my motion to effectively-
Can I just get clarification on that?
Yeah.
You said that the motion is to table or decline it altogether?
No, I'm not. I think basically just to not adopt, yeah, to not adopt this ordinance at all.
Thank you.
To not adopt any ordinance with respect to thrift stores. Is there a second?
I did.
Okay, so motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, passes 4-0.
Thank you, council.
The next item is public hearing to consider the assessment of charges to applicable properties in the sidewalk repair program for an amount to equal 50% of the city costs to repair defective sidewalks abutting their properties.
Good evening, Mayor Bain, members of the City Council, Tom Bonnigut, Public Works Director. I do not have a presentation, and I won't repeat the contents of the report, except to highlight just a few things. As you're aware and the public, this is the last required step in our process every time we do sidewalk repairs. This is the City Council's program that's been in existence for a number of years, by which the city helps cost-share on a 50% basis repair of defective sidewalk, public sidewalk throughout town. So the public hearing is an opportunity for anyone who's been invoiced, if they have an issue with the invoice or any other concerns, this is the opportunity for them to contest that. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, or wait to see if there's any comment.
Any questions? Okay, so I'll open the public hearing. Our speaker card, did I get one? I'm sorry, I did. Mr. Turner, followed by Rick Lefler.
Good evening, Mayor Bain, Mayor Protem Ferguson, and City Council. My name's Michael Turner, I'm the president of the San Clemente Elks Lodge. We received a notice to repair back in March, first notice on March 4th, and second notice on March 11th. We recently just received the final bill on November 21st. At that time, we had funds to be able to pay the bill. What we norm, with the Elks Lodge, I don't know if the councils are familiar with the Elks Lodge, but we donate, we're a nonprofit organization. We donate our building space for the Scouts, for the Marine Corps League, the Veterans Administration, the VFW, and other veterans organization. We're going to have the Adopt a Marine Dinner at our lodge this Friday night, all at no cost, and all donations from businesses around. But since March to November, we've fallen on some pretty hard times. We're asking a little bit of grace from the council for the bill of $400. I mean, I wish I could give you $400. Literally, we have just enough to keep our doors open, to be able to offer our services to all these different organizations. And we are a nonprofit, we do, we have given a little over a million and a half dollars back to the community, we've given to schools, you know, for computers and everything else. We do this with fundraising drives, but we just don't have the $400 at this time. So we're asking for a little grace and to be able to maybe possibly waive this at this time, the $400, and we'll try to do better next time, if we could.
Okay, Mr. Turner, Councilmember Ward?
What is your address?
1505 North El Camino Real.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Is that it? Thanks.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Turner, appreciate it. Mr. Lefler?
I read the ordinance online, and I got my question answered. I'm learning.
So we have a request from a property owner to give them some time. Do we have any precedent for doing that? Is there a process?
We do, Mayor. It's not unusual, and the council has in the past allowed payment plans to spread out payment over time. And so we would work with finance to reach out to the Elks Lodge and come up with something, typically to pay back within at least a year, but that has happened, and we do have some people on payment plans for the prior cycle, so your council could direct to do that and work out something mutually agreeable with the Elks, if you would like to do that.
Is there precedent for waiving fees?
I'm not aware of anything in the code, and any time that fees have been waived, so I'd have to defer to the City Attorney if you have that ability. I don't recall that it's happened. And I can't tell you, I can't advise on whether you could do it or not, I can just tell you that that's not in the code and not part of the adopted process.
All right, to do that, you'd have to make the same finding that you would to make a donation to that entity, and based on a finding that they provide a service that the city might otherwise, I think you could find the ability to do that.
I'd be very supportive of that. And in terms of where the funds would come from, are there any limitations, City- And in terms of where the funds would come from, are there any limitations, City Manager? Because we have council contingency. I think, I've been on council one year, I think I've used $150 to go to a conference, so, I mean, there's probably ample funds in there if we were able to donate those.
I think we're able to, we're able to find the money.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ward?
I would comment that, you know, I, I realize the Elks, you know, they are charitable, but they own a rather large building on El Camino Real with a large sidewalk in front of it, so this is a public safety issue. The city has gone in and done the repair, and, and all we ask is that the property owner shares half. So, I would be willing to look, I mean, certainly a grace period to help pay for it. But the Elks has a very large parking lot that's very valuable, and I think they should look at, if they haven't, some parking agreements that don't interfere with the use of their building. I think that could bring some money in, not to pay this bill, but I just think they have something, a very tangible, valuable asset over there in North Beach. So, that's my, I, I don't remember in the five years I've been on waiving any of these, but certainly a payment plan that they can do is, we should look at that.
So, I, I, at a minimum, if we waived fees, I would want to limit it solely to charitable organizations, because I do not like the precedent that it sets for property owners who have also sort of chitted in. But I think what I'd, I'd prefer to do for now is look at a payment plan or look at what we can work out. Either if there's a shared parking agreement, because there is a, a lot of parking spaces there, or perhaps myself and 20 or 40 of my closest friends could come visit the Exalted Ruler, and we could have a little fundraiser. So, I think there's, where there's a will, there's a way.
I'll pay the $400.
Sure. Well, we've already got a donation, so. All right. Problem solving. All right. Great. But I, I, again, I think the Elks are a great organization, and I, seriously, if you want to invite me, I'll invite all of my friends, and we'll come, and we'll do a fundraiser. So, thank you.
So, I don't think the, the public hearing has been closed yet.
Sorry, yes, we're closing the public hearing now. And we got on the record that Mr. Bork is donating.
$4,000.
All right, so with that, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
To approve.
Staff recommendation?
Second.
Sorry, I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Okay. And we have a second by Councilmember James, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Passes 4-0.
Next is public hearing to consider adopting ordinance 1683, a city-initiated amendment to San Clemente Municipal Code Title 8 regarding the adoption of the 2019 California State Building and Fire Codes and local amendments to those various codes.
Mr. Holden, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Jack Holden, I'm your building official. Nice to meet you, Mr. James. This public hearing is to consider adoption of the 2019 California Building Codes as amended locally. Every three years, the state mandates all local jurisdictions adopt a state building code, which includes the fire code, and allow local modifications to the code based on climate, geography, and topography conditions of the, of the jurisdiction. Our local modifications, and there are actually very few, meet these conditions as shown in the findings contained in the ordinance. The ordinance has been posted and made available to the community, and there were no comments. Staff recommends that the ordinance be adopted. If you have any questions.
Any questions? Councilmember Ward?
I just have one question. What change to this year, to the building code, would we be really surprised at?
Not any of our changes. The state, to the state building code, the one thing, all new homes have to have photovoltaic system. Some of the energy code requirements, it's QII, which is a quality in installation of insulation, is now mandated. So, there's a lot of energy code changes, these little things that catch up to, that most people don't even realize that goes into a building. Sprinkling hasn't changed, that's been this way for a long time in the city. None of those things changed. We didn't change any of our administration. Structurally, there's very few changes that anyone other than an engineer might notice.
So, the only thing that I took interest of was fire rings? And that is only in new building, correct? That's not anything to do with the city and our fire rings? Is that correct?
That's correct. It's in the fire code.
Well, I saw it was in the fire code, that's what made me kind of worried that it was talking about our fire rings. But I just want to make sure it's in the construction, building code.
Only in new construction.
Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So, we'll open the public hearing.
No cards.
No cards. I'll close the public hearing. Have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, so approve staff recommendation?
It's an ordinance, so unfortunately, it has to be read. Yes, I'm sorry.
That's fine, thanks for reminding me. I'd like to approve adopting staff recommendation to adopt ordinance number 1683 entitled an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, amending Title 15, Chapters 15.08, 15.12, 15.16, 15.20, 15.22, 15.23, and Title 8, Chapter 8.16 of the San Clemente Municipal Code, and adding to Title 15, Chapters 15.05, 15.11, 15.14, 15.17, and 15.18, adopting by reference the 2019 California Building Standards, California Code of Regulations Title 24, consisting in part of the 2019 Administrative Code, the 2019 California Building Code, the 2019 California Residential Code, the 2019 California Electrical Code, the 2019 California Mechanical Code, the 2019 California Plumbing Code, the 2019 California Fire Code, the 2019 California Green Building Standards Code, the 2019 California Administrative Code, the 2019 California Energy Code, the 2019 California Historical Building Code, the 2019 California Existing Building Code, and the 2019 California Reference Standards Code, together with certain additions, amendments, and deletions.
I'll second that.
I owe you one.
I'm tired for you. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 4-0, and that is why housing in California is so expensive.
Next item is a public hearing to consider a proposed ordinance for the adoption and amendment of the 2018 International Property Maintenance Code and relocation of the adopted 1997 Uniform Code for the Abatement of Dangerous Buildings to a new chapter of the San Clemente Municipal Code.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers. Adam Matamian, I'm the manager of the code compliance in Park Ranger Divisions. Today, I am speaking to you about a proposed ordinance to do three specific things. The first is to create a new chapter in Title 8, the Health and Safety Code of the city, Chapter 8.78 entitled Property Maintenance. And in that chapter, to move a, an existing adopted code we have called the Uniform Code for the Abatement of Dangerous Buildings, to move that from Title 15 over to this new chapter. And then the second thing is to, or, excuse me, the third thing would be to adopt the 2018 International Property Maintenance Code, which is a, an update to a code that we already have adopted in Title 15, and locate that with amendments similar to the ones that, that are already on our books for the code that we do have adopted, and locate that in Title, Chapter 8.78 as well. I will end my presentation with that, and if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions of Mr. Matamian? So, I'll open the public hearing.
I have no cards.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Have a motion?
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance number 1688 entitled an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, to adopt with amendments the 2008 International Property Maintenance Code and relocate the adopted 1997 Uniform Code for the Abatement of Dangerous Buildings to a new chapter 8.78, Property Maintenance of the San Clemente Municipal Code.
And I'll second that. I think with the slight correction, it was instead 2008, 2018 on the title. So, a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Passes 4-0.
Next is a public hearing to consider entering into an historic property preservation agreement for an historic property within the residential medium zoning district and within the coastal zone located at 230 West Marquita.
Jonathan?
Good evening, councilmembers. The item in front of you is a historic property preservation agreement, more commonly known as a Mills Act agreement. The first one that we're looking at this evening is for a single-family residence at 230 West Marquita. This screen shows the front elevation, is seen from West Marquita. The property is near Linda Lane. The property was designed by architect Virgil Westbrook, the most prominent architect in the city in the early days of San Clemente, and built for electrician Ralph Swiger, who was also prominent at that time. And the Strang Brothers built most of the early structures, and they built this one as well. It was designated as a landmark property by the city council in 2007. The property's had minimal alterations over time, mostly upgrades to utilities. Within this agreement, there's a list of tasks that must be completed by the property owners to preserve, repair, improve the property. Among those are landscape and site drainage plan requirement, garage foundation inspection and repair, and vinyl window replacements. Staff worked with GPA Consulting. We visit the site and do a tour of the property to create this list of tasks, and that's shared with the property owners in advance of going to a design review subcommittee meeting. The design review subcommittee serves as the city's cultural heritage subcommittee, so they looked at this task list as well and gave some recommendations for alteration of that timeline, which is what you see in front of you. So, staff does recommend that the city council approve this HPPA 19-359 for the Marquita property.
Any questions of Jonathan? Councilmember Ward?
Are the property owners here?
I believe that the property owner is here, Carolyn Kipper.
Would they like to speak? You don't have to.
I don't have anything.
Okay.
I'll let Jonathan.
Okay, nope. So, with that, I'll open the public hearing.
Larry Culbertson with the Historical Society. I hope you all had a chance to drive by this house. It's one of the very special Ollies. As Jonathan pointed out, it was designed by Virgil Westbrook, unaltered. It's really in great shape. Unfortunately, before the current owner, it had kind of gone downhill. So, we're very fortunate to get an owner who's going in there and doing, doing the right thing. I'd like to also take this opportunity to compliment staff. They've really tightened up their requirements on the Mills Act. There was a time when the Mills Act was, was kind of loosely administered, so now they've got their required termite reports, and, and they're really taking care of the Ollie, so, great job as part of staff, and we support this Mills Act all the way. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Larry, appreciate it. Any other common cards? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Questions or comments or a motion?
I'm happy to make a motion.
Okay.
To adopt the staff recommendation. And it's a resolution, so I don't have to read it.
Yeah, you don't have to read it.
Aren't you glad?
So, a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Passes 4-0, congratulations to the owners. And I also just quickly wanted to convince staff, I know early on this past year, when we looked at the Mills Act stuff, there were a lot of things that I think we wanted to tighten up on, because it is a privilege to get a Mills Act exemption, and we expect our owners to comply with that, so I really appreciate you making sure that all those Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, so thank you. They made our job much easier. Thank you.
Next item is public hearing to consider entering into an historic property preservation agreement for the historic property at 1814 North El Camino Real.
Okay, this is another Mills Act request. This one is for a commercial property, the former Ichibiri Restaurant, now OC Frescas is the applicant in this case. This is the elevation before they put the work into that building over the past year. And just as a quick example for council of one of the things that gets addressed in this, so staff did some background research on these properties, and those five single panes of window that you see are not original, and so one of the improvement tasks that was listed with this Mills Act was to, to remove those and bring back some divided lights that give the appearance of French doors that were originally at that location. So, that's one of the items that has already been completed, if you see the building today. In this case, again, we did the site visit with GPA Consulting to compile that list. There is a substantial amount of tax savings with this property, about $24,000, but you'll notice well that about $500,000 have already been invested in the exterior improvements of this building. The majority of the improvements for this one have already been completed or will be completed within the next year. So, once again, staff does recommend that the city council approve this Mills Act request, and I leave you with the historic photo of North Beach.
Great. Any questions of staff? Jonathan, I'll have a quick question if you, any other questions? No? You said that those five windows had been replaced. Do we know when that was?
Uh, that-
Not by the current owner, but previously, those, those were put in.
So, those were put in, at best that I can tell, in 1982.
Okay.
And what you, you can't tell too well from this photo, but there's a, if you've been to the current restaurant, OC Frescas, there's an oblong table, an amoeba table, if you will. That pop-out was actually the original entry to the building, and so that additional space and the relocation of the entry happened in the early 80s, so I assume that that's about the same time that those windows were, were placed.
So, a question under the Mills Act, because I honestly don't remember, if we have a property owner that doesn't comply, what is the process? Do we recoup some of the past tax? Is it refunded?
Sure.
Refresh my recollection there.
Sure. There's, there's two alternatives that the city has, a drastic option and a less drastic option. The first is to, to do a non-renewal of the contract. The non-renewal, so every Mills Act is a 10-year period, and that auto renews. So, if we do a non-renewal, then that just says that you, you can live out the remaining 10 years of the contract, but that's, then it's over. The more drastic, we would, you know, need to demonstrate that they're not abiding by the terms of the contract, and there's a penalty, a financial penalty, penalty of 12 and 1/2% of the property value.
Appreciate that. Any other questions?
Does it seem odd that we would allow someone that's not upholding a contract to live out the whole 10 years, say, the first five, they didn't do anything, that we'd allow them to go five more?
Well, that's kind of what I was getting at, and I guess, we had a long discussion on, gosh, back in February, March, when we had a couple of these Mills Act houses come through, is what we were doing at each step of the way in terms of inspections or otherwise, and how, I remember at the time, staff's response was, well, it's really not that robust. We, we tried, but what are we doing at this point to make sure that there is compliance? Because I think that's important. If you're gonna get a benefit from tax savings, you need to make sure you're complying, and I want to make it very clear that, at least I intend, to enforce these to the fullest extent we can, so.
Absolutely. So, we have had conversations with other cities as well as our consultant, and we'll be bringing something for consideration to council likely in January to look at adopting an inspection fee, which is something that multiple other cities do to support the requirement within the enabling state legislation that requires us to do an inspection every five years. And so, we, we did a test run with our consultant this year to look at one property that was at their 10-year period, and there were a few things that I, our staff had concerns with. So, what that would allow us to do is to, to continue to have the support of a consultant in doing those periodic five-year inspections.
So, if common cards, we'll open the public hearing.
Larry Culbertson, again, Historical Society. Again, this is one of the most important early buildings, probably the most famous of the restaurants, when you read the old newspapers back in the 30s. It was extremely unique. It had aquarium all the way around the, the outer edge. And unfortunately, like a lot of the buildings, it was extremely rundown. The previous owner, I'll be careful what I say, but they didn't do quite enough maintenance. So, I went through this as they were doing the construction, the rehabilitation on this building, and the current owner has just done an amazing job. It looks maybe as good as new, so we're, we're real happy with that. And as far as what the, you're talking about what the Mills Act now getting enforced, when they first brought it into effect back in the mid-'90s, they would give the people a 10-year list of things to do. In 10 years, it'd go by and not a single thing got done. So, it's really wonderful the way that the planning department is enforcing and giving them a timetable and making them stick to it. So, good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Culbertson.
Okay, Larry, you're leaving soon, but does anyone know what happened to the fish on top of the restaurant? Because I've always wondered. Is it? So, if we could put a plea out to anyone that has that fish to return it, it's part of our city history.
So, I'll post public hearing. Motion to approve.
I'll second.
So, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes 4-0.
Passes four oh.
Next is a public hearing to consider a city council-initiated appeal of short-term apartment rental permit 19-295, the Bocal Star, regarding the approval... Regarding the approved use of a short-term rental at 119 San Pablo.
How's everybody doing at the dais? Could we take a quick break?
Should I? Yeah.
Okay. Let's take a five-minute break, real quick.
Sure.
All right. We'll call the meeting back to order.
Sure.
Yep.
Good evening, city council members, mayor. My name is Erin Guy. I am a...
Hang on one second. Folks, please, if you could sit down. We're going to try to get going again.
Good evening. My name is Erin Guy. I am a community development technician on staff with the city. The project at hand tonight is the appeal of short-term apartment rental permit number 19-295, also known as the Bocal Star. The proposed star is located at 119 Avenida San Pablo in the residential low-density zone. The residence is an existing legal non-conforming four-unit structure. It did receive a building permit in 1953 to exist as it does today as a four-unit structure, which does render it legal non-conforming based on today's zoning ordinance, which would not permit a multifamily structure in a residential low-density zone. The existing structure is eligible to apply for a star permit as a multifamily dwelling unit. Multifamily dwelling structures are eligible to apply for star permits outside of the STL-U-allowed areas, whereas, single-family residences are unable to apply for star permits and are not eligible to operate as short-term lodging units outside of those STL-U-allowed areas. There are currently four parking spaces on-site and four one-bedroom apartments. Units B, C, and D would be eligible for short-term lodging use and would be permitted to allow up to four persons at any one time, inclusive of renters and their guests. Unit A is owner-occupied by Ignat Bocal, the applicant who is here with us tonight. The application for short-term apartment rental use at 119 Avenida San Pablo in units B, C, and D was approved by the zoning administrator on October 17th. In response to public comment received both prior to and during the zoning administrator hearing, the zoning administrator did add three additional conditions of approval to star permit number 19-295, hoping to address concerns brought forth by the public. Some of these conditions of approval included condition of approval 3.2, which does limit all renters and guests to parking available on-site, aiming to alleviate concerns regarding on-street parking. Condition of approval 3.3 does require the identification and assignment of that on-site parking, and condition of approval 3.4 does require the use of a decibel monitoring system with record-keeping capabilities, which will help to enforce noise standards. This information must be shared upon a request with the community development director. So, if a noise complaint is filed in regards to the operation of the star, the community development director can request that decibel monitoring history from the property for the time in question. These additional conditions of approval aim to address concerns regarding the operation of the star. So, stars face additional location requirements that STLUs do not. So this includes a mandatory 300-foot buffer between stars and all other approved STLUs and stars, meaning that a new star cannot be approved within 300 feet of another currently operating STLU or star. So this buffer was established to help control density of stars outside of the STLU-allowed area. 119 Avenida San Pablo is outlined in red in the image above, and the pink buffer indicates that 300-foot radius. There are no currently permitted stars or STLUs within 300 feet of 119 Avenida San Pablo, the nearest approved star, being about 1,000 feet away at 1800 Entrada Paraiso. So based on the required findings and the additional conditions of approval that were added by the zoning administrator to address public concerns, staff recommends the approval of star permit 19-295, the Bocal Star, subject to the proposed conditions of approval. That concludes the presentation of the project. I'm available to answer questions. The applicant is also in attendance and available.
Any questions of Erin?
Talk to me about this decibel monitoring device. I have no idea what that is.
Sure. I'll actually defer that to the applicant, who installed that device on his own accord and chose to offer that monitoring history to the city.
Okay. I have one quick question as well...
Sure.
Before we get there to the applicant. This isn't an R1, so low-density residential area, right?
It is in the residential low-density zone. That's correct.
So, and because it's illegal non-conforming, it's allowed to seek out a star permit. Do we have any other instances where we have star permits that are issued in R1 areas?
We can find that out. I actually have the STLU map available to look at right now, if we'd like to look at So this is the Bocal Star residence here in red, and these blue dots here represent the amortized STLUs. So amortized STLUs that resided in the residential low-density zone, those actually expired two years through the amortization period. They were not granted the extension of those eight years that some of the others were granted in those higher-density zones.
Okay.
These areas here where the orange dots reside are residential medium and residential high-density visitor-serving zones, where all new STL user stars would be permitted. So the occurrence of new STL user stars, I couldn't speak to if there are any currently residing in residential low-density zones. However, there have only been four stars permitted since 2016 at the time of the adoption of the ordinance, and those are all here, represented by the green stars, mostly by the Pier Bowl in the downtown district.
Okay. But those are low-density residential, so R1 areas?
So this area here is going to be by downtown in the Pier Bowl, which is not a residential low-density zone.
Okay. Thank you.
I will defer back to Ignat for the original question regarding the decibel monitoring system.
Thank you.
Mr. James, this is the question... This is the device in question. It's by a company out of Dallas, noiseaware.io. What it allows to do, it allows to monitor the decibel level. So it's not a recording device, but it does, for example, after the hours of 8:00 PM, I can set it up so that it'll notify me if it's... If the noise level is higher than, say, a dinner party or a loud TV, and throughout the after-hours. And we do have, just like the staff noted, we do have the historic ability to go back and check exactly what the historic decibel levels on these are.
It makes a Bluetooth connection to your...
It's a Wi-Fi connection.
Wi-Fi connection.
Right. It's a Wi-Fi connection, and it's all recorded, and it gives me a notification in real-time if the noise level is higher than the ones that I've predetermined. And if that's the case, then I get to...
You would have one on each one of those units?
Correct.
And what precludes the tenant from disconnecting it, unplugging it?
There's a security device on it that's pretty secure. I mean, they'll have to have a toolbox to remove it.
Any other questions of staff? Okay. Karen, so I'll open the public hearing. We have lots of speaker cards, so I'll call a couple up at a time, if you could just come form a line behind the lectern. So first is... Is it DeLee?
Donna Lee.
I'm sorry, Donna. Donal...
Donna Lee.
Okay.
Yes.
Don Craig, and then Randy Quillman.
My name is Donna Lee, and 22 years ago, I came here on vacation and loved this town from the moment I seen it. While I was on vacation, I applied for a job at the Holiday Inn. To my surprise, they hired me on the spot. They gave me 30 days to go home and pack my things up and return to start work on that Easter weekend. This was the best decision I ever made in my life. Here I am, 22 years later, and retired, and living on a fixed income. I am here today to support Ignat, who was applied with the city to open up three small vacation rentals. If Ignat gets approved from the city, he has offered me a job doing laundry for his rentals. This extra income would help me tremendously. I would make enough money to be able to stay in San Clemente, the town that I love so much. If these rentals are approved from the city, not only will he need a laundry expert like myself, he will need housekeepers, groundkeepers, and maintenance help. I think this is a win-win for all of us. Let's approve the rentals so that we can share this town with our locals and tourists. I vote to let Ignat be approved for the vacation rentals in this city. Hopefully, the city council will feel the same way.
Thank you, Donna Lee. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Randy Quillman, followed by Don Craig, and then Paul Haselius.
Hi there. Yes, I'm Randy Quillman. I live at 117. I live next door to the apartments, and I just wanted to go over a couple of items that... that I just jotted down. First off, I wanted to just address the traffic issue. A while back, the street was removed, and we had new curbs installed. At the time, the traffic engineer recommended that we change the direction, but wanted to hear from the residents on the street. Not all the residents were there, and they recommended that it go the other way, only because of the traffic coming off the top of the hill. They like to make it that quick thing. So it isn't really anybody on our street that I think goes down the road at all fast. It's just the folks trying to get out off the hill quickly. So I don't think that the apartment is going to really change that. Regarding the actual building itself, since Ignat has taken ownership, he lives there, he takes care of it. I see him on weekends. He's a great guy. He does a good job of taking care of it, and that, for me personally, is a nice change. Previous owners have not been there, haven't taken care of it. When there were problems with people having parties at 3:00 in the morning, standing outside of my window, using their phone calls because they're inebriated and blah, 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 regardless. It doesn't happen anymore. Ignat has cured that. So I do appreciate that, and as far as the fewer cars, the issue that I wanted to mention was, there are, when the previous owner, that was the other thing, everybody had two and sometimes three automobiles, and it was really problematic for everybody that lived on the street, for a lot of reasons. And the automobiles frequently were abandoned in front of my house because my house was right next door. That doesn't happen anymore. And with this short-term rental, it would be, I don't believe the people there, I don't understand the demographic, but I don't believe they come and bring multiple automobiles. And I think sometimes they even use ride-sharing to get there. And then the last thing is, this is a small thing, but garbage cans with four units, three cans, math equals 12 garbage cans every Tuesday morning or, you know, Tuesday evening, waiting for the next load. And there are already many people, neighbors, that do park their cars on the street besides the, you know, well, just neighbors do. I'm lucky enough not to have to do that, but there are several that do, and when it's time for garbage, there's, with 12 more, it's a problem. And according to what I understand from Ignat, that should dramatically reduce. I apologize.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Don Craig, followed by Paul Haselius, and then is it Marcy Harns?
Hi, I'm Don Craig. I want to welcome all the new members, and congratulations. Just wanted to say that I'm a resident on the street there, and San Clemente already has plenty of motels throughout the city. If this is approved, it'll be taking business away from many of these established taxpayers. I went and surveyed the motels from Christianitas all the way down to where the freeway crosses at El Camino Real. 10 out of 10 along the El Camino Real who were surveyed do not want competition in their community by the way of Airbnb sites. These were just the motels surveyed in that small area. Most all of our neighbors also signed petitions saying that they did not want this in our neighborhood either. We're afraid of noise, people coming up and down the street. It's a one-way street. People come up the wrong way quite often. There are a number of young families on the street, lots of children amongst these young families, and the kids can't really go outside, you know, without cars just rushing by and stuff, so. The council signed statements from the residents, have, the council has signed statements from the residents on San Pablo, as well as the motel owners or managers, all stating that they do not want these short-term rentals. Bottom line is, we just don't want it in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Mr. Craig. Paul Haselius, followed by Marcy Harris, and then Tiffany Moore. Is Paul here? Nope, okay. Marcy, and then Tiffany Moore, and then Byron Wetzl.
City Council, I'm Marcy Harris. I'm a San Clemente resident. I met Ignat Bockel through a professional organization where we help train and educate short-term rental operators to run professional operations, as well as screen their guests. I get a good experience for both the neighborhoods as well as themselves as business owners. When I found myself in need of a short-term housing due to a slab leak and needing to stay in San Clemente, this was just 40 days ago, I contacted Ignat to see if he had a place, because I knew his standards were high. He had a place for me to stay. I've been there for 40 days, and I will be there through Christmas. My alternative without short-term rental, my children go to San Clemente High School, is a hotel for Christmas. I am very thankful that he has this place available to me. He handled the transaction in a very professional way. He lives on the premises and has reminded me multiple times that we have one parking spot, and we park in one parking spot. And I appreciate his standards because that's where I want to live, where people aren't having parties, where the guests are screened, and everyone is held to a high standard. And I have appreciated that in my short-term situation, and thankful I could stay in San Clemente and not in a hotel for Christmas. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Tiffany Moore, followed by Byron Wetzl, and then Jay Massey.
Hi, good evening, Council. Thank you for hearing my comments. I just wanted to know if any of you read through the letter that was sent on November 7th that outlined all of the municipal code that the STLU-STAR violates?
Yes, I received several letters, emails, and I've read them all. Thank you.
Thank you. I live directly across the street from Ignat. We have a, we're very proud owners of an Ollie Hansen. We are part of the Mills Act, and we are doing our best to comply with all of the requirements that the city requires when owning an Ollie Hansen on the Mills Act. So I just want to point out that, as, I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous. It has come to the residents of Avenida San Pablo's attention that the short-term apartment rental STAR permit has been approved for multiple rentals located at 119 Avenida San Pablo, units B, C, and D, three units. As residents of Avenida San Pablo, living directly across and adjacent to or from an enclosed proximity to Ignat, we are firmly against any short-term apartment rental STAR or short-term living units on our street. Approval of such STAR permits is in direct conflict with the City of San Clemente's municipal code, which outlines Avenida San Pablo as a residential low RL-density zone. Per the municipal code, as well as online, the city website, STARS are allowed in the areas where STLUs are permitted and other multifamily residential areas. This language fully implies STARS are only permitted in multifamily-zoned areas, and this unit, because it was built in 1953, is the only unit with multiple units on this street. And if it were to be built today, it would not be approved. Avenida San Pablo is designated Low RL-density Zone per Chapter 17.32 Residential Zones and Standards and per the City Zoning Map. As such, Avenida San Pablo is not zoned for STLUs and therefore prohibits permit approval for any STARS. These select areas of the city are fully defined per the STLU-allowed-area-vicinity maps, and Avenida San Pablo is clearly outside of that map, as the city staff showed. Since Avenida San Pablo is low residential-density-zoned street, commercial properties such as STLUs and STARS are out of character with the existing single-family neighborhood. Application approvals for STARS and STLU permits in this area therefore violates zoning codes meant to protect and preserve the character of our residential family neighborhoods. Chapter 17.28.292, would I be allowed to continue?
Thank you. I'm sorry, we have three minutes. But if that's your letter, I read the whole thing, and I think everyone on the council also read it.
Okay.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming tonight. Byron Wetzl, followed by Jay Massey, and then Ignat Bockel.
Hi, thank you for the few minutes I have. I just want to say for Ignat, he is a great guy. He's made the place a better place. It's probably better than it was when it was brand-new. On the inside, it's all beautiful. On the outside, it's better. And as far as the density, it's actually less than it would have been if you had, you know, like the neighbor, I don't know the neighbor's name, but he said it was, you know, a better place, and he lives right next door, so he would know better than anybody. And the fact that Ignat, a long time ago, he showed me the device that he showed you, the decibel meter, and the fact that it's so high-tech that he can monitor it and show you guys, you know, if you needed to know how, you know, how loud it is, it's actually, he keeps a very tight, you know, you know, look at who he lets come into that place, and so they're all, you know, screened, and he really cares about that place. He loves it, and he's made it a much better place, and the parking is much better. I live in the area, and he's just made it a much better place for people that live there. You know, I know that if you live there and you have this idea of, you know, what a, you know, high-density or whatever it would be, that their idea that it would be bad, that might be a conception that you get from, you know, maybe from other places, but if you look at the actual reality of the situation there, it's a much better place to drive past, and there's not as many trashcans, there's much more parking, and it's just a better place, you know? The whole thing is better, in my opinion. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Jay Massey, followed by Ignat Bockel, and then Gage Geserich. Gagerich, thank you very much.
I'd like to thank Council for taking the time to listen. Hi, I am Jay. As Marcy mentioned earlier, the professional organization that she's referring to, I am the owner and leader of said organization that teaches individuals to operate within compliance and making sure that these things happen. Having been a property owner of hundreds of apartment buildings, commercial properties, as well as cell phone towers, what we have done and what Ignat has followed is standard for many of the operators that we work with all across the United States, as well as 16 other countries. He has exceeded, at least to my understanding, all of the requirements that, inside of all of the ordinances as per our training dictates, and chief among them being the noise, trash, and parking, those things are typically hit upon very deeply to make sure that there is no disturbance and quiet enjoyment by all neighboring residences can still be had. And as also mentioned earlier, the volume of sustainable jobs, these are the ones that I love the most for any particular city, whereas they will continue because we have, we do live in a wonderful postcard. We have the ability to help other individuals become more sustainable themselves, which is part of the reason the organization was created in the first place, because I was creating jobs in Memphis, Tennessee, and other locations, and I wanted to create some here locally, as well for not only my own church organizations, but also empower entrepreneurs to do the same. Ignat has been a great example of making that actually happen and in following all of the recommendations that we have put forth. And most importantly, one of the things to really understand is that the standards are there, partly because our customers who come to visit wonderful places like San Clemente, they have a high expectation of the experience that they're going to have, which is set by each and every one of our operators from the moment that they see the first photo. And I'm sure you can attest that at any time that you've stayed anywhere, the impression that you were given by a photo, you don't really care how long it's been since that photo was taken, but the moment you arrive, you expect it to be as clean and as orderly as that photo looked. And that's exactly what he's been able to do, and which ultimately results in higher property values for all of the owners that are nearest to any of those that are operating according to our standards, which obviously then results ultimately in higher property tax rolls, higher sales and use tax, because in addition to cleaning, as mentioned, facilities maintenance is a major thing, because we have to make sure every doorknob works 100% of the time. Again, Ignat has been a great example of making that happen, and we constantly do work, and I thank you.
Great time. Thank you very much. Next is Ignat Bockel, followed by Gage Geserich, and then Jed Stamen. Real quick, he's the applicant here on this public hearing, so he gets 10 minutes. Thank you.
Good.
Mr. Bockel, since you're the applicant, you get 10 minutes if you'd like to take that time.
Got it.
You're not obligated to take it all, but...
Understood. Good evening, council members. Good evening. Good evening, council members, mayor. My name is Ignat Bockel. I've been a homeowner in the city of San Clemente for almost seven years now. I'd like to take a moment and focus who primary customers are for this project. My number-one customer, like Ms. Harris was here today, is a current San Clemente homeowner, our neighbor, who is remodeling their home, their kitchen, their master bath. They do not want to stay, they do not want to put their family in a dirty motel room. My number-one customer wants to stay in a clean, safe, professionally-designed, professionally-managed place with a fully-stocked kitchen, stainless-steel appliances, and sparkling clean linens. My customers are families who are in San Clemente because they're looking to become homeowners and taxpayers in San Clemente. They're shopping and closing on a home in our neighborhood. My customers are families who are visiting their neighbors, their relatives, my neighbors, here in San Clemente during the holidays like right now. My customer is a business traveler here in business in South County, and they want to stay in a pretty place by the beach that feels like home, not a big, brand-name hotel, and certainly not a motel. My customers are medical travelers who are getting procedures done in the area, and they need time to recuperate before being able to fly home elsewhere. And finally, my customers are families with kids who are in our beautiful town for the weekend to enjoy the beaches, the weather, and spend money in our awesome restaurants. In order to provide these accommodations, my main concern is the peace and quiet that my neighbors enjoy. I make sure that the guests who are approved for the reservations are vetted to the platforms, their backgrounds are verified. Before being accepted as guests, they must be approved by all of the available checks and balances systems. Like I mentioned before, not anyone just with just a credit card would be accepted as a guest with me. In addition, I use all the available technologies in order to ensure the safe and quiet environment for my neighbors. We talked about the noise-aware device that notifies me in real-time if the noise levels are higher than predetermined levels, which allows me to immediately squash the situation. As you guys heard, the staff presentation, the zoning department liked the idea so much, they made it a condition of this license and hopefully make it a standard in other short-term rentals here in town. The zoning department has approved the permit conditions, parking, all guests to be part in the property, not to take up any street parking, straightforward, easy for me to enforce. Of course, maximum occupancy requirements, and there is no short-term rental in 300-foot radius from my property. As I mentioned before, I'll make it my mission to find and report any illegal short-term rentals to city code enforcement officers and make sure to make the city's job easier enforcing those. In closing, opportunities for our local economy provide City of San Clemente with additional tax revenue, supports our San Clemente economy, our restaurants, our grocery stores, our farmers' market. I'm only hiring local community members to help out with the project. You guys heard from Ms. McCaslin, she's going to be doing the laundry, local cleaning crew, Ms. Sanchez is here, and all local landscaping guys, all local laundry and maintenance staff. Thank you for your time, and I welcome any questions.
Ignat, really quickly, I have a question. That device that you pulled out, the sound-measuring device?
Yeah.
Can somebody remove that? Is it just plugged into the wall? And if it is, do you get notified that it's been removed?
Exactly. First of all, I would get notification, but it's not that easy to remove it. As I answered Mr. James' question earlier, they'll have to have a toolbox for them to remove it. So there's a security feature to not to be able to remove it.
Okay. Well, are you currently operating it as a STAR, since you got your zoning administrator approval?
Basically, as I was informed by the city, the city gave me notice that I couldn't until this license is approved, so no.
So what was the use of the property before you purchased it, do you know?
It was traditional one-bedroom apartments with long-term leases.
Okay, and did you operate it as an apartment right after you purchased it?
Yes, I was operating it, so I purchased the property in February 4, 2013, and I was operating it as a traditional rental since then.
Okay. So can you tell, I mean, can you describe it? It'd be helpful for me to understand. Why did you make the decision to go from a normal apartment... Why did you make the decision to go from a normal apartment sort of model to now the STLU?
It's a simple economical decision.
So it was more money?
Yeah, it was more money.
Okay.
Then it's like selling pizza, the whole pizza, versus selling pizza by the slice. You'd make more money selling pizza by the slice.
Was your, was the building completely leased out right after you purchased it? Did you have tenants in all the apartments?
Yes, I did, and I had turnovers since. I mean, I've been operating since 2013, so that's six years ago.
Okay. Did you have any complaints when it was apartments in terms of noise or parking or otherwise?
I run a pretty tight ship as a landlord. I've sold and owned other properties in Orange County and Riverside County, so I did get rid of a problem tenant when I just moved in. As a matter of fact, after she saw my standards, she kind of moved out. She moved out really quickly after I became the owner and I've set forth the rules that the tenants would have to comply with.
Okay. Any other questions to the applicant? Councilor Ward.
Have you always lived at this property since 2013?
Yes.
So I would imagine that full-time tenants there are on the straight and narrow with the owner present on the property.
Yes.
So we had several correspondence to us that you were trying out the vacation rentals before this, short-term rentals.
So before the city notified me in, I believe it was early July, that I couldn't run this as a short-term rental, yes, they were running for about a year to six months as a short-term rental. I had no idea that I needed the city license. When the city informed me that I couldn't do it, I immediately stopped that operation. And the tenants I have right now are more than 30 days.
Okay. So that's not short-term rentals, then, if you have current tenants that are more than 30 days?
So as defined by the city, the short-term tenant is less than 30 days. So more than short-term days isn't, as defined by the city, it's a long-term tenant.
So was there a complaint? Is that how it came about, that the city was contacted about the rentals?
To my knowledge, we never had any noise complaints.
No, a complaint of rentals, short-term rentals.
My understanding that somebody notified the code enforcement department that there was a short-term rental, yeah.
Okay. So I just wanted to establish that you hadn't spoken to the city before this permit.
Correct. I didn't know that I needed a city permit. In my mind, it was my property, and I could rent it out as long as it's residential property and the residential use, and that's exactly what I did.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions to the applicant?
How many? You have four parking spots?
Correct. So it's a fourplex. Each one is a one-bedroom apartment, I live in one of them, and each apartment has its own dedicated spot. And the condition of this permit by the zoning department is, you know, the tenants park in the designated spots.
Okay. And the, those spots are in the back or in the front? Where are they?
They're actually in the front and in the back of the property.
So you have to, how do you get from the front to the back?
Council member, I'll pull up a site plan.
Yeah, let's pull up the site plan. I'd like to see that.
Guess we'll have to go out and zoom in. So to answer the question regarding parking, there are two parking spaces located in the rear of the property, immediately adjacent to Unit D. There are also two parking spaces located at the front of the property, directly off of Avenue de San Pablo. You enter the driveway here, and there are immediately two parking spots available.
Sir, how many cars do you have personally?
One.
One.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Bockel. So just for the audience, the reason the applicant gets 10 minutes is it's required by our code and, I believe, by state law, because this is a public hearing, so due process dictates that we have to give them additional time and ask them questions, so I know there's some confusion there. So next up is going to be Gage Geserich, followed by Jed Stamen, and then, last name is Sanchez?
Hello, council.
Ms. Sanchez? Sorry, one second. Ms. Sanchez? Okay, you'll be up next. I just wanted to make sure. I was having a hard time reading the first names, so Gage?
Thank you so much. Sorry, got excited. So I'm a homeowner at 116 Avenue de San Pablo, almost directly across, a little on the slant. I purchased there about seven years ago, wanting to start a family. One of the things I just want to say, hopefully, we want to live next to neighbors, not customers. I want to start a family on this street. It's a very narrow, one-way street where we have enough restrictions in ourselves. Just that my own guess to explain to them that you have to drive down the street, not up, is hard enough, let alone a new individual living next door at all times. One other incidence that I wanted to bring up is there was a situation one night when I came home where between 119 and 117, a vehicle of one of the guests drove off the small retaining wall in between the two houses. We spent two hours just showing them the way of the land and how you drive up the street, and, you know, I'm a mechanic by trade, I had multiple jacks and, you know, rebar and everything else, trying to get it off the curb. And it's just, it's, somebody knew that you got to train on the street, and it's really interesting who comes over. Thank you guys so much.
Okay, thank you. Jed Stamen, followed by Ms. Sanchez, and then John Rodriguez.
Hi, Jed Stamen, 114 Avenue de San Pablo. Just to reiterate, the parking on the street is very limited. Looking at his plot plan, if you look from the corner of the building, there's no way two cars can pass the corner of the building side-by-side to park in those back two spaces, which I find that hard to believe, that people actually park it back there. The decibel meter is great for when people are inside, but when people are coming back from the bars at 2:00 a.m., from outrigger or down the street, you know, I've definitely heard people on the street late at night, and they are going there. It's a one-way street, as Gage was saying, and basically, the people who aren't going the right way are usually people going to that residence. And people that are staying in Airbnbs or vacation rentals are in a different mindset than people who are living in a neighborhood. They're in vacation mode, and rarely are they going to behave like a regular resident would. And keep in mind, I mean, this is a single-family street. There's no units on the street, so I'm sure if any of you were living next to units, you might have an issue with it, too. And the area isn't a short-term rental area, you know? On the map, it clearly is not in that area. Thank you for listening. Have a good day.
Thank you very much. Ms. Sanchez, followed by John Rodriguez, and then Jim Dahl.
Good evening. My name is Dulce Sanchez, and I have a company, Cleaning Services. I know Ignat, I'm here to support him, and I hope he can be approved and we can have business. And talking about the driving, to me, it was very easy to arrive there, and it's clearly the arrows. I don't have a problem to park, and I hope everything works for him. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. John Rodriguez, followed by Jim Dahl, and then Morgan Mednick.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Protem. My name's John Rodriguez. I'm a homeowner here in the city of San Clemente and a colleague of Ignat for more than seven years. I'd like to say that Ignat deeply cares about his neighborhood and well-being of his neighbors. He lives at the property, and he wants to preserve the serene and peaceful environment that it is. He's made an investment in technology to ensure that everything is in compliance, taking note the noise-aware sensors. I'd like to also take a moment and speak about Ignat's character. I understand that there are certain conditions that the zoning department has imposed on Ignat's project in regard to parking, noise control, and occupancy regulations. I have no doubt that Ignat will make it his priority to follow these regulations. Ignat is a man of his word. When he makes a promise, he always keeps his word. In addition, I'd like to add to the fact that Ignat helped me to become not just a homeowner, but a homeowner here in San Clemente. He has helped me navigate the process of qualifying for a mortgage. He has helped me in my home improvement decisions to make my property safe for me and my family. I have firsthand experience of being inside Ignat's apartments. They're very nicely well-done. Thank you for your time.
Hi, Jim Dahl, followed by Morgan Mednick, and then Brian Studenbauer.
Good evening, council. Congratulations, Dan, on becoming mayor, and Laura becoming Mayor Protem, and Jean being on the city council. I think we're going to have a great future for San Clemente. The reason I'm speaking on this issue is, on Montalvo, we have the possibility now of five vacation rentals across the street from our property. And at the time, at this time, there's only one that's being used. And every single week, there's four or five cars at one vacation rental. So for these folks on San Pablo, it's going to be an absolute nightmare. Everybody does an Uber in or come in by taxi or whatever. They drive cars. So consequently, the parking is going to be an absolute nightmare. And another problem that's going to come out of this is, on El Camino Real behind Pedro's, right now, there's spaces being used by the event center across the street. And these people are going to be parking down there in those public parking spaces along the El Camino Alley. So it's going to be even more compounded by having these vacation rentals there. Vacation rentals are a nightmare, I'm sorry. As much as, I would appreciate the fact that the property owner's going to try to do his best job he can, but they are a nightmare when it comes to parking. People bring their cars. Thank you.
Jim. Morgan Mednick, followed by Brian Studenbauer.
So I live on Avenue de San Pablo, and I'm not in favor of the proposed short-term rental units. Our neighbors are all good people, a lot of new families and very young families. My concern with the short-term rentals is that these guests generally do not abide by the same courtesies that they would apply in their own residences. You know, in the decibel meter, you know, who's to say it can't be muffled? I don't, you know, I question some of these obstacles that Mr. Bockel has, you know, is trying to overcome. I can appreciate his efforts, though I'm doubtful that they would be effective. I'm also curious as to the demographic of customers that this would draw. This location is not close to the beach, it's not that close to downtown, it's not particularly like a large space or high-end, so I have doubts. You know, and as homeowners, we're all on the street, working to improve our neighborhood and our quality of life, you know, and start families, and we're looking to, you know, live in a safe, positive environment where we know our neighbors. Thank you.
Brian Studenbauer.
Okay, good evening, council. Thanks for taking the time to hear this. I'm here to ask you guys to get rid of this permit for 119 Avenue de San Pablo. I live at 109 Avenue de San Pablo with my wife and two kids. And basically, it's outside the map for, we're in a residential low-density area. This is clearly, and it is clearly not on the map, to be approved for this permit. When they say there's going to be less parking, but there's allowed four occupants per unit, that could be up to 12 cars every weekend that is added to our street. So I don't see how he could regulate that or enforce that and tell occupants that they can only bring one car, they have to take a taxi in. And then another issue we always talk about here in San Clemente is homelessness and how expensive houses are. And to me, there's three one-bedroom apartments in San Clemente that he said he rented for $1,300 a month, which is probably the most affordable apartment you're going to find in San Clemente. So to me, you're taking away potential housing for someone that could get an apartment in San Clemente that is somewhat affordable. And then also with his monitoring device, I just feel like that, you know, could easily be disabled and with a screwdriver, and code enforcement's not going to have the time to go to STLU or STAR, that shouldn't even be there in the first place. So I'd like to ask you guys to revoke his permit and keep it residential low-density. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sharon Deener.
Hi, I'm Sharon Deener. I don't live on that street, but the street I live on, we used to have a lot of short-term rentals. And we moved in not knowing right across from us there was one. And after we watched car after car show up and leave within a few days, I told my husband, I said, "I don't think we have neighbors across the street." And so we sat there watching, and we got there, we were like, "You're right." And we had buses show up with people, we had multiple cars, it was a bigger house, but it doesn't matter when people come to a short-term rental, and that's under 30 days. I wouldn't have cared if it was 30 days or more, but we would have three different families within one week. They stayed two nights, they stayed three nights. They don't know the area and they don't care. They're there to entertain their family, and they're not going to show up in one car. You have one parking spot, as he says, what do you do when the other car shows up? Whoops, this time only, park on the street. Whoops, this time only. That's going to happen every week. So I'm just saying that luckily on our street, there had been a problem, and the city closed down the rental. Thank you, thank you. And I'm hurt to hear that they're trying to come out again. Keep it as an apartment. That's what it was when he bought it. He shouldn't have assumed that I'm going to buy it and then change it later to get more money. But the rents, if he's had a problem income-wise, then raise the rents and see if he can rent it for that. But I don't think these belong in a neighborhood, especially when you say it's a one-way street. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Deener. I don't have any other comment cards, so I'll...
So, well, I'd like to make some comments, because I'm the only council member that was around when we did the ordinance back in 2018. The Stars came about when we were going through North Beach, and we had set areas in North Beach that were inside a line, and we had some multifamily dwellings that were outside the line, that were units behind El Camino Real, behind the businesses. And they said to us, we've already been operating for a while. We also had owners at the pier that said, "I own a duplex. I've been renting out the other one for a while. I'm outside the pier zone." So we came up with something called a STAR. But we intended it to be in multifamily areas, or mostly multifamily areas. And the clear evidence of that is because of all the effort we did to get them out of residential low. We have had this ordinance, I think, for four years. It's been adjudicated, you know, it's been in court. We have now, I think, 14 that sued us, and they have a few more years to go. So I think the evidence is clear that we didn't intend it to be there. I understand that that was what our intent was. We didn't realize that our code says that it's going to be in multifamily residential and only where STLUs are not allowed. If you look at the page that had the, it's attachment three on page 23 of the, of our report, it has a date of August 20th, 2018. We made the decision on these in May of 2018. So we effectively, I've never seen this map that has the footnote that says Stars are allowed in legal, non-conforming, multifamily structures in single-family residential zones, not shown on the map. I'm not aware, I think that's the only place in our code that might state that. Our intent, and I'm sorry Chris is not here today, because he's the one that came up with Stars with staff, and what we intended was, these were in the multifamily outside the lines that we did, but mostly in the Pier Bowl and North Beach. Never intended, never thought that there would be a legal, non-conforming use inside a completely low-residential unit. So that's the comment that I would make. Mr. Ignat did not come to us until, if he had come to us and asked us about this, we would have seen this over a year and a half ago, and we probably would have come up with, I would have said the same thing, that these aren't allowed. But he didn't come in, and he just started renting. He's free to rent to anyone for 29 days or more, which he can do, and that helps people inside our city. But he did take away three units that are relatively affordable, and that was the over, two of the overreaching goals when we did the STLU ordinance was to save our housing, because we have a housing element, that we have to have some affordable housing in our city. city, and people were being kicked out, so we wanted to save that. The second one was to get the vacation rentals and sober living homes out of single-family residential neighborhoods. We tied all those together. I understand that the STAR is something that came out when we revisited this two years later, but this was not our intent. And so I would ask the council to please deny this because it will open up vacation rentals and other uses in single-family residential, and that is not what the residents wanted and asked of us. So that's, those are my comments. If you have any questions about what we did, I'll try and answer them.
Great, thanks, Councilmember Ward. I have a question, Erin. I heard a lot about parking requirements and concerns about parking issues. If this was a normal apartment complex, how many parking spaces per apartment would be permitted or required?
Sure. So for a single-family residence, there's one space required per dwelling unit. That parking ratio does change once you have more than three units. I would have to pull up the parking table to be sure of those numbers, but after three units, it's based on the number of bedrooms per unit. So most likely, it would work out to one unit for a one, or one space for a one-bedroom. However, over three units, there is also a requirement for .3 guest parking spaces per unit, so there would be an additional required parking space for a guest. At this time, the apartment is also legal non-conforming as to parking requirements for an apartment, if that is the nature of your question.
Well, I guess it is. I'm just trying to figure out if the intensity of the parking, you know, presumably if you had a couple that lived in one of those apartments, they would have two cars, and one of the cars would be in a spot, and the other one would be out on the street, probably somewhere. So just trying to weigh what the intensification would be for the parking situation. But, okay, thank you. I don't have any more questions.
I have a question, Erin, if I may. Now, the zoning administrator approved the permit for this. And I've heard some comments today that this isn't complying with the zoning ordinance, this approval. It appears that these are permitted, they're permitted outside of the allowed STLU zones throughout the city. So can you validate that, those statements?
Sure. So all I can speak to is the current zoning ordinance that was passed, there were several STLU ordinances, as Councilmember Ward alluded to, several were passed in 2016, and then there was a follow-up in 2018. Those current STLU ordinances do allow for this alternative process for multifamily residences outside of those STLU-allowed areas. That's in 17.32, the Residential Use Table, Footnotes 1920 and 21. So those footnotes do allow for that alternative process. That alternative process is to apply for a STAR permit, which does require a discretionary approval with the zoning administrator, and which does require findings to be made in order for approval.
Which they've been made by our zoning administrator.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember James, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, is there a motion?
Wait a minute, I'm looking for it. I would make a motion that we do not adopt Resolution Number 1951. Oh, wait, I'm on the wrong one. Hold on, I'm so sorry. It's still the same, that we do not adopt staff recommendation. We don't determine the projects, Kettler exempt from the California SEQA. And number two, that we don't approve the short-term lodging, because this is not what our council intended.
I'd like to make a substitute motion, if I may, and that is to adopt staff recommendation.
Second to that motion?
Is there a second to my motion?
I think we need to make a, so there's no second on the substitute motion.
I second Councilmember Ward's motion.
So the substitute motion fails because it wasn't seconded, so there's a motion and a second. Motion by Councilmember Ward, second by Councilmember James, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
No.
Okay. So staff recommendation, or excuse me, staff recommendation fails, so the appeal is denied. I just want to just talk a little bit about my rationale for this, so it's not out of the blue. But Mr. Bokel, I have no doubt that you run a great, great establishment. I think the issue here for me is that there was an ordinance that was passed, and when I look at an attorney's speak, reasonable investment back expectations, you bought that property sort of with the understanding that it was being operated as apartments. And so when I look at that, you do have the ability to rent out the spaces, as Councilmember Ward pointed out, for, you know, 30 days or more. But as I look at the precedent and look around the city for other areas and low-density residential, there just doesn't seem to be any other examples of STAR permits. So I'm concerned about the precedent. But at some point in the future, perhaps, we can kind of look at addressing that issue if there are circumstances where, for example, if you have a person that lives in their home and wants to rent out a room in their home, we could look at that and expand it. But right now, I think the ordinance is what it is, and unfortunately, I just don't think that this complies with the intent of it, so.
So I would ask the mayor, I think because that footnote is in that attachment, that staff, do we give you guidance tonight that that is to be removed, or you have to bring that back to a council meeting for us to do?
Well, I think what I'd rather do is just leave it as it is, which is discretionary to take a look at. They may all be in R1 zones, but I think just leave it as it is for now. And I think under this circumstance, I think the findings for me just are, that it's not suitable for the location, given that it's an R1, and given the traffic and the parking impacts that we've heard about, and the noise issues, I think this particular site just doesn't work for us.
Yeah, Mayor, Council, that, I would prefer that you rest your finding on that. As Erin indicated, that footnote got codified, and so what that gives you, the ability to do is you've just done, is to find on a case-by-case that the circumstances are lacking that would warrant issuance of the permit.
Yeah, I just want to say, I know for myself, and I'm not speaking for all of the council members, but I think in this circumstance, I just don't think this spot seems to work well.
Is that all right? The record reflects that? Okay.
Okay. Next item is a report from the city clerk concerning the possibility of amending the code of the city as it relates to the operations composition and appointment of members of various city commissions and committees, and to consider establishing a public safety committee. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, at your meeting of June 18th, the council reviewed the structure, composition, and performance of the city's commissions and committees with special attention to, with regard to efficiency in terms of staff usage and resources. As a result of that review, council directed staff to draft an ordinance that would enact those proposed changes. The ordinance is before you this evening, as drafted, it proposes that the code amendments affecting those standing commission and committee members be operative on July 1, 2020. So I am available to answer any questions.
Any questions? So just really quickly, and I know we've got a number of cards, and I've received and read all of the comments to date, including we had a joint session where I think a number of folks were present and were able to give some comments as well, particularly members of the committees and commissions. I just want to do a quick straw poll on just one specific issue as part of this ordinance as to whether or not, instead of having the Planning Commission Investment Committee pick council member to appointee, that we just do a body-wide vote for all of the members and sort of forego that. So if you straw poll, if you're in favor of a body vote as opposed to a one-to-one appointment, if you could say aye or raise your hand, so.
Aye.
So, okay, so I think that, just out of curiosity, should hopefully direct some of our comments, I think. But with that...
Mayor, if I could ask, could we go committee by committee?
I think that would be a good idea. Let's take the public comments first. I just wanted to get that one, which seemed to be a common theme, get that out of the way. So Mr. Brown, would you like to speak? Don?
No, sir, you, the edge of my concerns as far as my...
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Luffler?
Yeah, regarding the commissions, this has been a long time coming. I think it'll give a lot of people in the community a chance to, instead of just coming up here and talking to you, it'll give them a chance to network together and come together, probably give you some good commission. I would like to hope that, because I have talked to some people about being on these commissions, and I think that they might have the wrong idea about it. I mean, while you should certainly, having an agenda or having a strong opinion should certainly not preclude you from being on any of these commissions. Matter of fact, I think it's important that you do come onto it with a strong opinion, because that way you'll be willing to talk out and try to have some proactivity. But I think these commissions, if I understand, and I actually, I went on the computer and I blipped on the little ones, and then it came out with kind of a mission statement on them and whatever, and to me, it's, the commissions aren't to make policy at all. I'm sure anybody, if you ask any of the people on any of these commissions if they have an opinion, they'd be happy to tell you, but it's to, at the direction of the council, to get information on a specific subject matter and to bring back that subject matter to the council so you guys can make an educated decision on these different...
Maybe she'll go out there.
No, they can handle it just fine. Anyway, so that's it, you know, is people apply to these, try to get people on there who certainly have strong opinions and want to work hard, but the goal is to get you back the information, not to just bring back their opinions to you. That's what this is for. So anyway, that's all I've got to say, but I think it's a great idea, and I think if structured right with the right people, I think it can really be valuable. So, thanks a lot.
Yeah.
That was on public safety.
Public safety, all right. We got you. We're with you. We're a little slow at this time of night. Lou Avra?
I understand that you decided you, for the Planning Commission, you will appoint it by vote of all the...
The tentative is to deny the one-to-one appointment, so, sure.
Okay.
Yep, great, all right, thanks. Mr. Kretenger?
Well, that, just thank you first of all, that change knocks out like 98% of what I wanted to talk about, but the one other thing I'll just point out is that in the midst of an ongoing homeless crisis, reducing the Human Affairs Committee maybe seems like the wrong move. I think many hands make light work, and if that committee would be left at seven, I think that may be prudent. That's all.
Thank you, appreciate it. Tyler, Bowden?
Yeah, the appointment of the commissions was most of what I had to say as well, but I just thought I'd get up and speak and first off, say congrats to Mayor Bane and Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson and Councilmember James for your new positions, and I know you do it well. I also wanted to just say thank you so much for all the work you've put into being diligent about really sharpening the pencil on the committees and commissions for the city of San Clemente. I think you've done a great job. It's been a pleasure to be on the Human Affairs Committee so far. The only thing that I would really say that, you know, in terms of reducing the size of the committees from seven to five, that makes it more of a challenge as a committee member, is kind of just subcommittees off of the committee, you know. So with a committee of five, having a subcommittee, you can only have two people that meet outside of a regularly scheduled meeting, so it makes it a little bit more challenging. I don't necessarily think that the Human Affairs Committee could, you know, should have more members than the rest of the committees. I think it should be pretty much uniform across all, and I think if the council has decided, or the subcommittee, the council's decided that, you know, the, having five instead of seven is more efficient and effective, I'm okay with that. My main concern, as I mentioned, was just the appointment of the Planning Commission. So again, thanks so much for your hard work, and I think that, you know, utilizing the committees and commissions to better serve the community is, you know, the goal here, the aim here, and I look forward to seeing more of that in the future. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Tyler. Bart Crandall?
Yeah, I'm appreciating you reconsidering the issue, and I think the community opposition for the volunteers, those that participate in the city.
All right, so for the crowd at home, Mr. Crandall thinks we're all great. Mr. Tally?
I will second Mr. Crandall's comments there.
All right, Mr. Tally also thinks we're great. All right.
So with that?
Just real quickly, I will, I will, I didn't see one, Jim, but you can speak if you would like.
Yeah, I got a card in.
Okay, sorry about that.
Put the wrong number down.
You can't, you cannot speak.
Thanks, Mayor Bane. Well, first of all, the hardest thing of my 16 years on the city council was committees and commissions. It's the hardest things for your folks to do because you spend a lot of time interviewing people, but the biggest thing about the interviews is the folks in the community get to know the people that are on the commissions. And I think it's very important that we continue that. And the reduction in size, I can see the reason for that. Some of the commissions were, had quite a few people, it could have been reduced and saved money, staff time and the like. And of course, the individual appointments, I was opposed to that, and I remember it coming up a couple of times over my 16 years, and we decided to keep the open interview process and voting process the way it was. In fact, it got changed, I remember probably in 2008, that we used to sort of do a secret ballot kind of thing, and now it's all open and above board, so really appreciate it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. I think that's all of our cards. So just real quickly, I was going to say that, you know, Kathy, Councilmember Ward and I were the subcommittee for this, and we spent a lot of time, I thought, and deepened thought, and we went back and forth several times on various of these issues, including the one-to-one appointment. And I'll fully admit that it was sort of my idea, and the reason for that was, you know, there's other cities that I've seen effectively use that model, and, you know, I think in my own experience here at the city council, when I was a planning commissioner and didn't get reappointed, I felt that a council majority did not reappoint me for political reasons. So I wanted to address that as best I could, and I realized that, you know, change is hard, and it's sometimes, it's a good thing, and sometimes it's just a bad thing. So, you know, I can acknowledge when maybe it wasn't the right direction to go, so we'll reassess, but that was the impetus behind it. It wasn't a nefarious, you know, we wanted to fire a planning commissioner if they didn't do exactly what we wanted. It was really more of a situation where we thought we could vet out people that had technical expertise, because frankly, planning commissioners should have a technical background, and I wanted to make sure, given what I do, that we have a great planning commission, because it's incredibly important. So with that, we have five people who are here willing to work together to find good people, and we will endeavor to do that and hopefully not make political decisions. So with that, let's go through each of the individual committees and commissions.
One other quick thing on your point.
Sorry, Lou, do you want to come on up and speak since you forewent it? Let's let everyone hear you at home.
Well, I don't mean to take time, it's late, but I had jotted down the names of some of the folks that had been on the Planning Commission, who had gone on to leadership roles in the city, and it's just unbelievable. As far as Planning Commission folks that I know that have gone on to the city council, Lori Doncheck, Susan Richel, Wayne Eggleston, and then of course, Dan Bane and Kathy Ward here, all, again, selected by the entire city council to be on planning. Michael Calp, who was the DBA president for so many years, Julia Darden, who was one of the founding members of Peer Pride, and then there are three folks that are on the Planning Commission now that served with me during my eight years, and Don Brown, Jim Rulin, and Bart Crandall, who are sitting in the back. So the notion of appointing these folks like you've decided to go ahead and do now is the potential leadership that you get onto that Planning Commission that goes on to other things. So I just wanted to make that point, because these names are impressive.
Glad you didn't forget me, Lou. Susan Ambrose?
Good evening. My congratulations also to you, Mayor Bane, and Mayor Pro Tim, Laura Ferguson, and welcome Jane to the council. I'm up here to congratulate you for all the hard work that you've done, and I'd also like to congratulate my colleagues. I'm the chairperson of the Coastal Advisory Committee. We work really hard on coastal issues. We talk about, and we bring people in to educate us on issues that are common to not only our city, but other local cities that share the kinds of issues that we're facing right now, like sea level rise is a good example. And I also want to thank you, Mayor Bane, for taking the time to meet with me and one of my colleagues on the Coastal Advisory Committee, John McGuigan. We came in and talked to you when you had floated the idea of maybe Coastal Advisory Committee being an ad hoc committee. And I also want to thank you, Mayor Bane, for taking the time to meet with me and one of my colleagues on the Coastal Advisory Committee, John McWiggin. We came in and talked to you when you had floated the idea of maybe Coastal Advisory Committee being an ad hoc committee, in other words, an as-needed committee. We live in a community where we have six miles of coastal territory that we must preserve, conserve, and protect. So, with, and it is hugely important to our economic vitality of our city, not only to our residents, but people who come to visit us. So, keeping that in mind, the role that we play in the city is one not only of technical input expertise in terms of sand management, or sand cleaning, or bacteriological monitoring, or watershed drainage, or sewer drainage, or I could go on and on, but I only have another minute and a half here. But, my point here is, we are also vehicles for community interaction. If I go on a coastal walk, or the coastal trail rather, and take a walk, and if I know people, or even if I don't, if I'm talking about something or observing something, people will frequently stop me and ask me what I think about this, or what's going on, or if I'm pointing out the sand pushing that happened recently, or the carving out that state parks did from the sand down there at Calafia and at Riviera, people will stop and say, "Well, what did they do that here? Why are they doing this? What's happening with the sand? You know, why do we have these shoulders up here? Where are the rocks? Why are more railroad ties?" And we're sending the word out, and I'm not the only one on my committee who does this, but I, I'm just relating to my own personal and professional experiences here. So, we spend a lot of time, and we're not the only committee that does that, planning does that, human resources, human affairs does that, and all of us get involved with the community, and that's what we want in a transparent city, don't we? We want to get the community involved in what we do and show them how much we care. So, when I tell people I sit on the Coastal Advisory Committee, they go, "Wow, thanks a lot. How can we help?" Businesspeople in the community have said, "Why don't you let us know you needed help? It's coastal cleanup day sooner. Next time, let me know in May." And so, I'll go back and posters if I can get them from the coastal commission in Sacramento sooner, but anyway, thank you so very much for all of that you do.
Thank you, Susan.
Well, we're going to go each one, by each one, right? I think that's the easiest way. I'll, right, I'll start off. I don't remember hearing anything from anyone on the beaches, parks, and rec about going from seven to five, so I have no issues with that committee, with what's being recommended. Does anyone else know if we've heard anything on that?
I just know I heard from Chair Strager at the joint, the joint meeting concerned about the timing. Two hours he felt was too short. I don't know entirely if I agree with that, but I'd be willing to go to three hours if anybody felt strongly about that, but I feel like with the workload that I've seen, two hours should be sufficient time, but...
Well, doesn't it take care of it that it says, unless otherwise approved by a majority vote of the committee?
Yeah, I think Chair Strager also had concern about staff getting a say in that.
Oh.
But...
I think staff serves at the, the reason we're doing this is so that staff has more control, but the chairs also are controlling these meetings. Right?
Three hours?
Three hours?
Yes, I'm good with three hours.
Okay.
I'm happy to, we'll go three hours, but gives them flexibility.
Gives them flexibility to go three hours.
Yeah, I think at that point, I feel a lot more comfortable with giving primary staff support, the ability to sort of opt out, because I want to be respectful of their home time as well, but, does that work for everyone? Okay?
Yes. So, straw vote over that?
So, yeah, so all in favor of that? The three-hour change? Aye, so. Coastal Advisory Committee?
I don't have any issues with what's being proposed. We've already made changes, I think, based on comments.
I think so. I think I just want to be consistent in terms of the hour. Let's go with three hours for that.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Could we say something like that we, I mean, staff can control this with how much work they have, I mean, what they put in the report, that our goal is the two hours, but if, if there's an event coming up or something that they need to do, then the staff report should allow for the three hours, you know, in workload, shouldn't it?
Well, they should plan for that, and I think I'd just leave on the out that they can always vote to go longer if need be, and I assume that staff is going to try to work with them unless they have something that comes up that they just absolutely have to be home or otherwise.
Right, but I think, I think it's, we do have to have limits, because that's why we're doing, a lot of this was to streamline the committee so that their work gets done, and it's not a long meeting when it doesn't have to be.
So, straw vote on this with the three-hour change? Is everybody in favor of that?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So, you have a...
Across the board, three hours.
The limit.
Let's do that, yes. Golf Committee? Any concerns about what's proposed?
No.
Okay. Human Affairs?
I'd like to suggest we keep that at seven. We've heard from a couple of members. We know how much work they do and how they have their subcommittees. We've heard from two members of the seven, and they've been very involved, as you know, in the homeless issues as well, and they're planning some upcoming speaker series in the new year, and I just want to support them in terms of having the subcommittees for additional work that they may be doing in the near future with their goals.
Support for that?
I don't know if I totally support it, because the Human Affairs Committee, we haven't, we haven't authorized their work. I know they submitted something, but it has not been cleared to do, and in the past, we have had some trouble getting members on this committee, and so I think going back to five very strong members would, is a good idea. But, as far as the workload, we haven't, and the speaker series, we haven't approved that. So, that would be my concern. I think the homeless problem, that, you know, if we're going to talk about that, because that was mentioned, don't get rid of them because of the homeless problem. I think the council is dealing with the homeless problem, and I think this public safety, the task force that we're going to have of people with expertise is going to help us, and I have the feeling the homeless problem is going to be a big part of that. So, I'm really wondering, and we'll get to that later, about having a homeless, we really, if we need an ad hoc for that, but I don't think we need seven members for the human affairs, because I think they're struggling to find things to do.
I think they're all very strong members. We've met with them, we spent a lot of time with them when we planned the town hall. Is there staff here? But they're volunteers, and they have a lot of goals, and yes, they need to be approved, but they're volunteers, and they have all these good plans and goals and have what subcommittees. Why not let them? I think they can serve a bigger role in our city, considering all the issues. Is there staff here that might be able to talk to some of the additional things that they do, that they can share with the public? No? So, I'm going to support keeping them at seven.
A straw poll, I mean, the one thing I just wanted was consistency across the board, I guess, but, you know, we're a council of five, and we make it work within the Brown Act on all the various issues we deal with, so I think it's possible. But, anyway, is there a straw poll on sort of keeping it at seven? Who's in favor of keeping it seven?
I am, unless we make all committees five equal.
Well, except for the planning commission, because that's, yeah, I agree.
I was going to support planning commission be five too, consistent across the board. You know, the law only, the law requires five or more. We have seven.
I'm not going to be for that. It has, we tried it, Bob Baker tried it, we tried it, we tried to get them to five, it didn't work, because of the things that they have to do. Okay, so I'll talk on that one, because I'm on that committee right now. I think the city treasurer brought this up to us in a letter, that, the part about developing a work plan, that that really doesn't apply to this committee, because we have a complete city investment policy, and that investment policy drives what happens in these meetings. So, a work plan is, that, that should be gone, the finalized work plan should be gone, the first three things.
Do you want to get rid of the first four points?
Yeah, first three, actually, because it says amendments to the work plan shall require council approval. If they have to change the investment policy, they do have to come to us. So, that's kind of goes without saying. And then, on this one, we already talked about not appointing any more members or changing the makeup of it, right?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm good with the rest of it. I think he was also, but when we talked about this, you know, we have a city treasurer.
Let's see, Mayor and Council, we're looking at, I think, page 8A-21. Could you work off that instead of the bullet points? Can we can see exactly in the codified ordinance? So far, we could do this tonight, but depending on how much you alter it, we may need to, we may need to continue the actual...
We're going to break these apart and do it into the joint.
Okay, we just want you to have, you need to have the whole ordinance, every word, front to back, in front of you to introduce it. So, I don't know if you're intending to do that tonight, or, sorry to interrupt, or to go through these kind of conceptually and then let Joanne and me?
I think that's what we should do.
I do too, because otherwise, it's, we'll have...
We have a draft ordinance.
We could do it while you're sat on your hands for a while, but if you just give us, then just, thank you. Keep doing what you're doing, and either for Tuesday or for the 17th, we'll have a codified version ready to go. Okay, thank you.
That means you and Joanne over the holidays, so. Okay, so investment advisory, so just for my simple, the first four bullet points, we would strike those.
Yes.
Okay, that, agreeable to everyone?
Yes.
So, I think right now, the Investment Advisory Committee has six members.
I think we would...
Does that count the treasurer?
Yes, it does count, it counts the city treasurer, two industry specialists.
I think we should have five.
Yeah, I think so too.
One citizen at large.
Yeah, I think just five.
Yeah.
Let's change it to five. So, we would get rid of...
Getting rid of what? One of the industry specialists, or?
No. Oh, we already did. We did get rid of one. One of them, if, council would remember, we got a letter from her that she resigned, because she knew that we were already...
Yes, but there's, right now, there's an empty position. I'm just saying, for purposes of the ordinance, you want me to write it?
As one industry specialist.
One industry specialist, a total of five members.
Agreed. I think that's, yeah.
And, to be consistent, we can change it to three hours, but I can tell you the city treasurer is very expedient that that will not be needed.
Yeah, I just want it to be consistent.
I just wanted to communicate on behalf of the elected treasurer, Mark Taylor, eliminating one of the subject matter experts, the industry specialist, he supports that, since we have a vacancy of one.
That's helpful, thank you. Perfect. So, with the change to the planning commission...
And just before we get off that, I'm sorry, but I want to make sure I'm going to write this correctly. You're okay with the one industry specialist, the way that the original ordinance was drafted, the city treasurer makes that appointment? You're okay with that staying?
Okay. And as far as a work plan, would that be something that they're going to have, because they have study sessions, so would the work plan just be, we want to know what they're going to study, so that we can comment on that? Like staff give it to us, like for the year, or as things come up? Because I think that's how they, they routinely go through different subjects, and also whatever comes up, they do, so.
There was, obviously, projects come in based on applications, but I think the work plan would be geared more towards things like legislative enactments, whether it's a general plan, or a specific plan, or something like that, we would have a general work plan that we would give them on that basis. I think staff generally does that anyway, but that would be my, that would be what I would envision related to an annual work plan, but then projects would come up as they come up, and that's, they deal with that, so.
Okay.
I don't think you can work plan projects, because applicants have their own, their own minds, so.
Okay.
With that, does that recommendation work? Keeping it seven, okay. Alright, so the new committee, public safety.
So, I had a question, and Scott might have to comment on this. These ad hocks, they're all public meetings? Can, is there ad hocks that are never, that aren't public, or?
I think, yeah, thanks, Mayor and Council. I think that this, these enactments contemplate that these bodies have continuing subject matter jurisdiction, so they ought to be considered standing committees, subject to notice meeting requirements.
Okay.
I think that's how you've treated them, right, Joanne?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, because one of my issues that I was worried about, we did a public safety task force, and I'm calling this the wrong thing, this is public safety committee, this new committee. We tried to get industry specialists, people that, that were in law enforcement, or fire, or security, or something, and once they saw that this was a public forum, kind of free-for-all, they bowed out, and the meetings didn't turn into so much that the council got, the council we were at, we wanted. It was just a public forum where a bunch of people aired their grievances. So, I, that's why I asked the question, is, I'm worried about keeping industry specialists on this and really getting their advice, and I didn't know if we could do it where they, they meet, and they, they talk to the public and get their concerns, and then they're able to meet in private to talk amongst themselves about that. So, it sounds like that we can't, we can't say that for this committee.
That would be hard. Their jurisdiction or their service would have to sunset after a relatively short time in order for us to be able to do that, and I don't think that's what you have in mind generally.
Okay, alright, so that's just a question I, I wanted to ask. I think the intent of this, to have people that, that could help us with what they've done in other cities and what they know works, is, is good. Seven members, us appointing someone, because I think we all know someone that's been in our ear to do this. I think maybe that's still a good idea.
So, I was going to do it pointed by body, and I was actually leaning more towards limiting it to five, to be consistent, with one representative included in that from OCSD.
Okay, so that's probably a good idea, because that happened also, that we just had too many people on it. It just, it, and I think if you limit it and the people are focused, they'll be at the meetings, and we had a problem with people coming to those meetings, you know, on a regular basis. So, we had a rotating board, so I think, I think that's a good idea.
So, you're saying one of the five would be OCSD?
Mm-hmm.
Hmm. Or we limit it to four?
Well, you just want to go five?
With OCSD. I think that'd be good. Not, don't count them in the five.
Yeah.
So, okay, so it's going to be six total, five selected by the council as a body, one representative from OCSD.
Almost as an ad hoc member.
An ex officio member, yeah.
Ex officio, that's the word I was looking for.
They don't have a, they don't have a vote. They have a lot to say, but they don't...
Sure, okay.
And would council appoint the OCSD member, or would OCSD...
We'll let Chief Manhart select.
You gotta see that as Chief Manhart.
Participant, but yeah, I think Chief Manhart would be great, if he's willing to do that in his evening time.
So, I think this is going to be a good committee, as far as getting better communication with the sheriffs and the public and our needs, but I hope, I hope it stays that.
You can keep an eye on it and monitor it, and I'll commit to doing that, looking at the minutes and watching the meetings, and perhaps Councilmember James, since you're a resident security expert, public safety, you can bird dog that as well.
Okay, absolutely.
Alright, so we're giving direction to come back with the ordinance, and I apologize to Joanne, because she worked so hard on this over many months, as did Scott, but this is how the sausage is made, so.
Thank you, Joanne. We're all sorry.
No, it's okay, I'm getting good at it here.
I have, I have one question here.
So, I'm getting soft, so normally I'm not supposed to let people talk from...
I'm so sorry, do you want me to walk up there?
Go ahead and ask your question, it's fine.
On coastal, we had a representative for BPNR, and we also had a representative for planning that came. Now, BPNR is no longer coming, we found that we didn't have that much in common overall of what we, our territory, so to speak. In planning, we do have some overlap interests, though, for example, the local coastal program, and some developments that would be in the coastal zone. And I don't, I didn't see planning as a representative in our, in the notes or the outline for coastal. And I had sent you a note a month or so ago about we could have planning as, as an invitation if we were discussing something where there is mutual interest, I could be sure to ask staff to invite them out.
So, I think that could be addressed... So I think that could be addressed, just simply through an invitation. I think the committee, just as it stands, is gonna be those five folks, and if you wanted to invite somebody from Planning to attend, then certainly you would be more than, you could invite two people from Planning, if you would like, so.
I just wanted to clear that, because I've been asked that question about my colleagues.
Sure. And I would think, as the Chair of, of the Coastal Advisory, you could facilitate that with the Chair of the Planning Commission.
Yes, thank you very much.
So, no, I got it. So, so we'll come back probably December 17th, I'd like to, okay.
We've extended it out until July 12th.
Right, but I'd like to get it done before the end of the year, if we can, so that I could post, there's a mati act appointments list, so we can start recruiting for people. Okay, Oral Communications Part Two, I don't have any cards. I do? Oh.
Mr. Loeffler?
He's in with Lieutenant Manhart. It's your turn to...
So just giving, what was the topic?
Sorry, just really, really briefly, and I'm sorry, Rick, just before you get there. Joanne, we had, earlier I had, agendized for consideration. Do we need to do that as part of new business? To adjourn that, or do we need to save that to the end?
You'll, you'll do that at the end. The urgency ordinance is on the agenda. You'll just adjourn it to the next time.
At the very end. Just wanted to make sure. Okay.
Okay. All right. City manager, city attorney?
No more to report tonight, thanks.
Okay, establishment of council meeting schedule, and possible joint meetings for 2020. I agenda, I agendized this to give council the opportunity to schedule its meetings for 2020. In the past, councils always scheduled it, determined it at this time to accommodate vacations. So I ask you to decide whether you want to have any joint meetings in 2020. In the past, councils canceled a couple council meetings in the summer, whenever you want to accommodate vacations. Also, if you could determine whether you want to cancel or reschedule the regular council meetings of March 3rd and November 3rd, because they fall on major election dates. And then the last thing, if, if you want to determine whether to cancel or reschedule the regular council meeting of January 5th, 2021, that's just always hard to get out, because just before that is the holiday furlough.
Is that the one where we thought staff would have a lot of difficulty preparing all the staff reports?
Yes.
Okay.
So, Joanne, should we start with the first one, whether we should have a joint meeting?
Sure.
I mean, I think we always have a joint meeting, so I think that's, that's a good thing to have.
So, in that case, if you could go ahead and schedule it, I put in the staff report the dates when the golf course would be available. So let's see if any of these work out. In the past, it's been when, when a fifth Tuesday occurs in a month. So the options are March 31st, 2020, June 30th, 2020, September 29th, 2020, December 29th, I don't think you want, but that's fifth Tuesday.
No, so I'm sort of leaning more towards March or June, as we're sort of kicking in gears for the new budget process and all that, and talking about planning for, for the new fiscal year. Does anybody have any...
I agree. I'd like to do...
Preference, March or...
Probably March.
March?
I like March.
Before the, before the budget?
Yeah.
Yes.
Vote in June?
Budget workshops, May, June adoption, budget.
Okay, so let's shoot for the March, is that March 31st?
March 3rd.
Is that 2020, Joanne?
Yes.
Okay, that's gonna be really recent compared to the one we just had. I'm wondering if we should skip it, go to the next one, I don't know.
So my only thought is, I mean...
It's only a couple months away.
It, it is.
That's the only problem with that. We have to either say we're not gonna do it, and punt it to another one, because we won't have good attendance, I don't think.
Well, I don't want to do it in June 30th, now that I'm thinking about it, because we're gonna be appointing new commissions, committee members in July, so.
That's why I was leaning towards September 29th, because it's kind of after everything, and before the end of the actual calendar year.
It's not a bad point, so.
That's fine. September 29th.
All right, that works. September 29th.
And then, did you want to cancel any meetings for vacations?
Maybe one in each month, but this last year, we had two months of no meetings. It was too much. Got a lot of complaints.
And any other suggestions been made in the past, is maybe, you know, during a spring break, whatever you like.
Right, I mean, I'm fine with, I'd love to have, never go a month without a meeting, but one meeting in July, and one in August, I propose, cancel one in each for vacations, to accommodate staff vacations.
We normally cancel the first meeting in July, because it's the fourth, and staff is very busy accommodating all the people coming to our city.
Right.
The one reason to have two is that it, in a row, is that it allows council to take a break, and staff to figure out what vacations, but I don't know if it's easier for them to have a month in August, so that they can stagger. I, I've never heard that from them.
James?
This year, the fourth is on Saturday?
Fourth is on Saturday? So, I...
Won't matter.
I don't think it really matters.
So what about the last meeting of July, first meeting of August?
I, I think staff would appreciate having that. Second meeting and the first meeting.
To Laura's point, it's not, then it's not two months like it was this past year. I mean, right?
That sounds good.
Well, to be fair, we had a lot going on, and the mayor had died, and I think...
No, I agree.
We all needed the break.
It was, it was needed, but I think just, you know...
It was a little awkward.
It was. So I, I would agree, if that's easier for staff, because we want to take breaks, but they need to know ahead of time, so they can schedule also.
So that would be the 21st and the fourth, we would take off.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I want to be accommodating the staff, so. All right. Perfect.
We have to talk about the ones that we cancel, because they're on election days. One is March 3rd, and I looked at March, I have to do this with a calendar, Joanne, because this is just too hard to do.
Yeah.
The third is the first Tuesday of the month, so if we cancel that, the problem with going to the 10th is, it's the mayor's prayer breakfast, and we finally got them to not put it on a council meeting day, because it is so long and so hard for everyone, including staff to go to, and the police, and everyone. So I, I think, if you look at March, there's a bunch of days in it. If you pick the 17th, which is still a council meeting, and then punted the next meeting to the 31st, that weeks, works out that it's two weeks apart.
Then a week?
And then it's good for the next meeting, too.
But then you have a meeting on the...
April 7th.
On April 7th.
But it's a, it's, it's two weeks, because it's the second Tuesday.
And the mayor's prayer breakfast is in the morning. What, how does that impede our council meeting?
It's at 7:00 in the morning.
Right.
In the, in the past, the...
I went, I went this year, yeah.
In the past, the Kiwanis prayer breakfast has been on a council meeting.
Right.
And so...
It's in the morning, for an hour and a half.
Yeah, and it starts at 7:00 o'clock.
Right.
And so, with a long council meeting till 11:00 o'clock, so...
Okay.
So the Kiwanis moved it to an off Tuesday that wasn't a council meeting day this year.
So if we move our council meeting...
Speaking as the person that's going to be doing that, I would prefer to have...
You would be toast.
Yeah.
It is very hard, but if you look at March, you could do the 17th, and then the 31st, and it kind of works out with April 7th.
Why can't we just move, why can't we just move the meeting to the 4th?
The 4th?
I'd rather just do that. I'd rather...
Okay. Wait. The Planning Commission has the chairs.
That would conflict with the Planning Commission. One thing council has done in the past is had it on Thursday. If that works for you. I'm just saying, council has done that in the past for some elections. Just move it two days away, so that it doesn't conflict with Planning, but it's up to you.
The second?
Yeah.
All right. Have one more, though.
Does anybody meet on Mondays in here?
The January 4th meeting, wait a minute.
That was the meeting?
No. I'm sorry, I have the wrong, November 3rd. We normally cancel that meeting.
November 3rd's usually canceled?
Um, if it's an election.
If I'm, I'm canceling that.
Okay.
And, um, January 4th, canceling, January 5th?
Yeah, I agree.
Like staff, staff, the holidays, Mary, that's...
Okay, good, thank you. Okay, so the next item...
Do we still have council comments, or are we doing those at the end?
Oh, those are coming up.
Coming up, okay.
I just don't want to forget anything here. So, next item on the agenda is update to council committees, to regional committees, commissions, and boards. And you have in your packet, your current assignments, so if you'd like to just go through each one, and, and make any changes that you want to make. And if any changes are made to the Orange County Fire Authority Representative, which I believe is currently Councilmember Ward, that would need to be done by resolution.
Okay, I'd like to get started. May we get started?
Yeah.
Without any, let's see. Okay, up top is the Capo Stono Unified School District. We haven't had a meeting in a long time. It seems like a long time, doesn't it, Kathy? So I'm, I'm fine being on that, but maybe they'll call on us pretty soon. I know they've been pretty busy with their school year.
Right. I think they were quarterly, but we haven't had one in a while, you're right.
Right.
So I'll stay on it.
Okay, me too. And the Coastal Animal Services Authority, I have been the alternate since, since about June, I believe, and I'd like to be the primary. I've been going to the meetings for the last six months, so I'd like to be the primary, since I'm actually attending the meetings.
Finally.
Okay, thank you. And then perhaps Mr. Hamm would like to be the alternate, or someone else.
Okay.
We have to keep in mind, we have to give Chris some, I know he's willing to stay on what he's got, but he's not here tonight.
Do we need input by the council members, Joanne, to make those changes, or can a majority do that tonight?
No, we'll just go through, and you could just do it by consensus, and then at the very end, we would make motion to approve it.
Okay, thanks.
So the CEP, Dan, are you still willing, or you want to punt it?
I don't want off that, with the mayor stuff.
Yeah.
That's like five hours on, so long, so do you want it to go over, or...
I can, but there needs to be an alternate in case, because sometimes the OCFA conflicts with that. Not all the time, but it has a couple times. Because I think they do this on a Thursday.
Something Chris would be interested in, or change? Or can you be open about it, or...
It's very interesting.
Okay, so if I'm, you, just, uh, serve and see.
Okay.
Someone be on chamber, if I can.
Yes, I enjoy that, I'll stay.
Okay.
Downtown?
I think, for some reason, you switched with Chris on that, but he, he was the primary for a long time.
So making the primary?
Yeah, because I think they like him. We haven't heard anything from them.
And then the alternate would be?
Me.
Okay. Next one is decided already. So OCFA, I, you know, I'm glad to still serve on it. We're in between labor negotiations, they've already started, their MOU is up, so it's a concern to change it now. And also, we had to make a change, because the, Steve passed away, so they've had to put up with a new council member. They're not too happy about that all the time.
I'm fine with you serving.
Okay. So I don't know why we don't have a, I guess we don't have an alternate on that.
The OCFA changed its JPA, right.
You're right, okay, thank you for reminding me.
Historic Preservation Ad hoc.
I'm fine, staying.
Okay.
As it is.
If they ever call one. Dan, you fine on the next one, or you want to punt that one, too?
I want to give that one to, to Chris, or if somebody else wants to serve on that.
I'll, I, I can serve on it.
There's way in this list, I'm, I'm...
I, no, you have to start doing that, because you're the mayor. Unless, Laura, do you want that one? Because I, I could do it.
No, I'm, I'm good. I probably bet it's best not to do the CJPIA, thank you.
All right.
So that's gonna be...
And Chris is an alternate?
Yeah.
Okay. And then I'm fine staying on the Investment Advisory, if, Laura, anyone have any interest in that? No?
Very good.
All right, I'll stay on it.
I'm fine staying on the library, however, I've, I've given notice, or asked Veronica to give them, give me more notice, because they really, they come out with their meetings, and it's usually two days in advance, so I haven't been able to attend, but they're going to try to come up with a better calendar, she said, for next year, so we have a little more notice.
Okay. So that's Chris, who stays the, who's reading?
Yeah.
He's on?
Yep.
I have the meeting.
I'll stay on MODOC.
The next two is...
And the water.
Yep.
Yeah.
I'll stay on this, it's here.
Okay. Do we need an alternate?
That one was inactive.
We just enacted it today.
Did you want to bring it back?
It's not, oh, I'm sorry, it's not the Public Safety Task Force, it's the Public Safety Committee, Commission?
The Public Safety Committee is the one that's coming back on December 17th.
So we can't rule on it now?
Well, I, I'm just saying that council previously, I, I see that in the, in the third column over there, that it was inactive, and may be reactivated later.
So it's two different things? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Is it two different things?
Right.
So I'll just say, we're gonna do a straw vote, that Jean would be taking that when it comes back to us.
Okay, great.
That's our intent.
Got it.
Okay. I knew we'd come up with a word eventually. Uh, Chris, I don't think has a problem with the Sam replenishment.
Your peer role?
Oh, no, I skipped it.
I'm staying.
Sorry. Okay.
SCAG General Assembly, that's, uh...
I don't mind going.
May.
Did you say yes?
Happy you were going.
Yeah, I'll go. Laura, do you want to get off the social service?
No, I'd like to remain on that committee.
Watershed is ta, is staff.
Dave Rebenstorf had asked me that if you wanted to keep it staff, he'd like for[1681.47] for you to specifically say that it would be Dave Rebenstorf and Cynthia Mallett as the alternate, or both of them together. Either one of them can serve, but he wanted names as opposed to just staff. If that's okay.
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 And then on TCA, Laura?
Oh, yes.
Would you consider flipping that?
Actually, Jean has expressed an interest to me in wanting to be on the TCA board. Do you still have an interest in serving?
Would you?
He mentioned that to me.
I'd be willing to be an alternate.
Laura, are you willing to step off of it? And I would take the primary, and Jean's the alternate?
Oh, is that what you'd like, Jean? Because I know you expressed that you wanted to be on the board. Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, so Ward is the primary, and Jean is the alternate, okay.
So, I'd like to stay on, uh, Sam Y. Key, and would you like to be the alternate? Sure, would you like to?
Sure, I'll be your alternate for that.
Okay. I think that they, I think they should meet all of us. I think that's not a bad idea.
And I recall the mayor mentioning at the last meeting that you might want to appoint a subcommittee on whether to partner with organizations that support the TCA. I think you said that you'd like to.
No, so what we're talking about is meeting with, you know, a subcommittee that was Mayor Schwartz.
You don't need to make any appointments? Okay.
Vector control, we had talked about at the last meeting.
I have some applications sent out. I'd like to have us do the applications.
I have four.
You have received one, oh, good.
One?
Yes, I received four by yesterday's deadline, and I've got on the agenda for a little bit later to establish the interview date.
Oh, very good, good job.
It's the most applicants we've ever had.
That's great.
So, wall of recognition, is that what it's, that's currently Councilmember Ward, the next page? That stayed the same? Okay, so if you just want to make a motion to approve the revised list, we don't need a resolution for the OCFA.
So, I'll move that we approve the revised list as discussed. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes 4-0.
Next item is consideration of establishing a standing committee on homelessness. At your meeting of June 26th, council discussed the possibility of expanding the homeless subcommittee, which currently consists of Councilmember Ferguson and Mayor Potam Bain, to include additional members and expanded goals. So, this item has been agendized to allow you to consider forming that committee. If you determine to form the committee, you have the discretion to either determine the number of members and appoint the members who serve on the committee, or you could delegate that authority to Councilmember Ferguson and Mayor Potam Bain. And similarly, council could establish the goals for the committee, or delegate that authority as well to Councilmember Ferguson and Mayor Potam Bain. So, up to you.
So, I'm sort of, I'm okay at this point.
I like the idea of it, but not as a standing committee, with, I'd like it to be an ad hoc committee, the as needed, instead of the standing committee twice a month or once a month with staff. That's what I would like to see it be. I still think it's important, and I'm, I'm fine leading that, but to create objectives with, you know, a group of people that may want to be on it. Of course, we'd have to, you know, see how many people are interested in being that. I have a little, a list already going, because this has been deferred a couple of times. But I think it's meaningful, we've, Mayor Bain and I had met many months ago with about 20 church leaders, so they're looking to get involved and lend a helping hand in any way they can. So, I think when people are willing to do that, we could find a role for them somehow. But I believe it's best if organically, we work this out with those who might be interested, right? In creating objectives and goals and a homeless action plan for addressing homelessness. Because we, we know, I mean, we see it, there's gaps that aren't, you know, being served here. There's a lot of good service organizations, but we still see some gaps in service. And I think that it'd be helpful to have one, maybe even if it met quarterly as an ad hoc. So, that's, that's my input.
Maybe you'd have representation from, from the Human Affairs Committee?
Yes.
And, and, and the public sa, and, and the, the yet-to-be-formed Public Safety Committee? Because it looks, it looks like those committees would have some interest in, in that, in that topic.
Right, and we have people in the community that have some really great background and experience that would love to be able to lend their, their expertise to us, so that we can solve some of the issues that we face in the community.
I would make the comment that the Human Affairs Committee should be the ones meeting with all these churches. In the past, that's what the Human Affairs Committee did. They coordinated with the churches, and they found out what the needs were in the community via the religious, you know, churches that were, were doing this. So, um.
Oh, Tyler just came up.
I will just, I'm going to be really honest. Before having the committee on the homeless, meant that people in the community thought that only two council members weren't working on this. I thought it was very divisive. I didn't think it, it helped the community, it made them very upset that three council members weren't working on it. In fact, the mayor was attacked also, the night he passed away, because we weren't working on the homeless issue. I think all homeless issues should come before all five of us, and all people should be talking to us.
You've given me a good idea. Well, Jean, you, you actually started it, was that the subcommittees we talked about earlier, about the, Tyler Bowden, who's here tonight, is about to speak, who mentioned they have subcommittees, right, for various targeted topics that they address? And this could be one of them. This could be their subcommittee.
It could be, it still needs to be approved by us. But I agree with Mr. James, that I think the, the Public Safety Committee is with, currently where we're at.
Yeah, definitely.
Is going to be who deals with this, and any issues, I think, all five council members.
And the. Oh, but of course.
Should be working on.
But I think the homelessness, and Tyler Bowden, you may be speaking of, about this tonight, but that may be one of your subcommittees already, because I know that the speaker series that they're going to be having next year is going to be addressing various causes of homelessness, right? Addiction and mental illness, job loss, so. But no, I think it's really great that Jean, that you mentioned it, Kathy, that you seconded that, that it parlay's into something that they spearhead. I'd love to still be involved as a, you know, council rep to be attending their meetings.
I'm not sure we'll be seconded.
Uh, not seconded, but supported him in his idea, because Jean had actually said this would be a really great committee for, you agree, in other words, for Human Affairs and Public Safety Task Force or Committee to be involved in, so that'd be great.
Well, Human Affairs is supposed to be bringing needs of the community to us.
Yeah, and they are, they're doing a great job.
So, just, just real quick, so a lot of cross-talk, I just want to make sure. So, we're not going to have a standing committee, we're going to have subcommittees of Human Affairs, Public Safety, that would meet to discuss homeless issues, which I think is, but I think is better, because then we don't have a standing committee and Brown Act issues and all that stuff.
Be great. I think it'd be a really great collaborative effort.
Yeah, that would work better. By the time, yeah, three council members in any configuration talk about something, then we have to be concerned about elevating it here. But I don't think that's what you're talking about, that you would break out, have task force, and that sounds perfectly ad hoc and perfectly acceptable, as you've envisioned it.
Okay, so we're not determining anything tonight, that's up to the subcommittees to bring to us.
Good plan.
Mr. Bowden?
Thank you for the time. Just wanted to mention that, you know, homelessness is part of the mission of the Human Affairs Committee, and one of our members wrote a three-pillar plan to tackle the issue of homelessness in town, and I think this council has, has looked at it in the past. And I understand what Kathy's saying about, you know, the Human Affairs Committee, or the homelessness town hall making, you know, a couple of council members look really good, and everybody else look not so good. And I think the Human Affairs Committee is kind of caught in the middle of that, because we're just trying to work, you know, we're just trying to do work and do what we can to, to serve our purpose as, as a committee as well as we can. And a lot of it really just comes from direction from the council. We just need to have direction from the council in order to accomplish tasks, and we're, we're at the ready to do that, you know, and, and so we're very happy to do whatever we can to assist with the issue of homelessness. And there's certain things, actions that have been taken that we haven't had any part, part of, you know? The city law, for example, had nothing to do with the Human Affairs Committee. The town hall meeting on homelessness had a lot to do with the Human Affairs Committee, and we'll continue to try to do things to engage the community in, in things, discussions related to our purpose. Thank you.
Next item is establishment of a date and time to interview and make an appointment to the city representative to the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District. I received four applications by yesterday's deadline, so at the last meeting, you determined that you would have scheduled the interview date after, we knew how many. I will say from my experience, that whenever we've interviewed in the past, it tends to take about five minutes per person. So, you probably need about 20 minutes. So, what is your pleasure? Would you like to have it maybe before the December 17th?
I think so, before the meeting, be more convenient.
Before the close session? So, maybe? 4:30?
Sure.
Perfect. Next item is the second reading of ordinance 1685, clarification of standards regulating non-conforming mobile home and mobile home park uses.
Any comment cards? Motion?
Joanne, we have to read it, don't we?
Yes.
So, I move that we adopt staff recommendation, adopt ordinance number 1685, entitled in ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, amending subsection 17.28.19.0A, section 17.72.020, subsection 17.72.030.0C3, and subsection 17.72.060.E of title 17 of the San Clemente Municipal Code, to clarify standards regulating non-conforming mobile home and mobile home park uses.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and second, all in favor? Aye. Passes 4-0.
Next is the second reading of ordinance 1686, ticket required areas of the city's transit facilities. And I do have a speaker card on this one.
Mr. Lefler? Tickets on platform, second reading.
Yeah, the, the tickets for being on the platform, the couple of things I wanted to, and I asked you this before, has OCSD committed to enforcing it? Whatever their strategy is for that, but the other thing is, it says you have to have a valid ticket? Is that, is that what the, I think it says a valid, I, I read the ordinance, it said a valid ticket. Yeah, but it said, yeah, but it said a valid ticket, and you could, is, is a ticket that was used six hours ago for transportation, is that a valid ticket? It's a valid ticket, it's not counterfeit, it's just not a ticket for current transportation. And all, I'm. I'm, I'm just saying, if the police are going to enforce it, it needs to really be clear that that ticket has to be for something imminent transportation, not just a valid ticket. Because, I mean, I've got a valid ticket here from Siekstrom Center. It's valid, not counterfeit, it's valid. Now, it was for a year ago, but it's, it's valid, it's a valid ticket. So, I, when your ordinance, you might think, maybe the city attorney would want to look at that, just to tweak it down to where, if you start writing those tickets and you start taking them to court, it, it could possibly be an issue. I, I, I'm not sure, I'm not an attorney, but that's, that's my two cents, and that's all I had. Thank you for your time, you're doing a great job, by the way.
Thank you. Scott, is there a temporal requirement with that?
I'll look that up, and if, if we need to tweak it, I'll bring that back. I think the valid ticket, I, text was borrowed from the penal code provision that prohibits you being in a train area without a valid ticket. But we'll double-check that, and if we need to redefine it, I, to me, I thought it meant that it was active, and you could use it when a train comes, but if not, we'll bring back a tweak for that. But I suggest you pass this to the second reading, because I think we borrowed that from the parallel state law.
Okay. So, I'll, I'll make a motion to move staff recommendation to adopt ordinance number 1686, entitled in ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, adding chapter 12.40, train stations to the San Clemente Municipal Code relating to ticket required areas of the city's transit facilities. Second?
Second.
Okay, motion by me, second by Councilmember James, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes 4-0.
Next is the second reading of ordinance 1687, relating to tents in city parks.
Any speaker cards?
No.
So, I move that we adopt ordinance number 1687, entitled in ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, adding section 12.28.030 to the San Clemente Municipal Code relating to tents in city parks.
I'll second that. Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes 4-0.
So, adjournment, you had mentioned that I wanted to have a, an adjourned regular meeting next Tuesday?
Yes.
The time? Next Tuesday would be December 10th?
Okay, but before we get that, I think we have council comments? Right? Any council comments?
I have a few.
Okay, Councilmember Ferguson?
Yeah, I have a few council comments. Okay, I'd like to just, um. See if I have support for bringing back the council policy, number 120111, to the next city council agenda, to specifically address the number of votes that it takes to get something on a city council agenda. As we know, currently, it's three votes, what became practice earlier this year. Do I have support to bring that back to the next meeting? Okay.
Just to clarify really quickly, so Jean understands, so, right now, it takes a majority of council to get an item put on the agenda, a vote during a council meeting, or it can be put on by the city manager. This would change the number of people that it would take to get on. An agenda item.
Oh, well, it's just council.
It's not agenda, it's council comments, so.
Oh, well.
Well, we're talking about if there's support.
So. So, basically, so if I want, like, tonight, I'm going to be talking about something next that I couldn't have placed on the agenda, because I needed, James reminded me, I needed to come to council tonight, and under council comments, get support of the majority of the city council to place something on the agenda. So, earlier this year, we had a vote with the policy, because there were a lot of revisions done to the policy for council. And I recall Mayor Bain said we should have one vote, one person should be able to get something on the agenda. And then three council members said, no, three to get on the agenda. So, I had to compromise of, let's put, have two people vote and put something on the agenda. And so, we lost out, it was three to the two of us. So, three now, three votes to get anything on the agenda. So, if you want to place something on the agenda, you need to come to council under council comments, and get the majority to support what you'd like to have on the agenda.
So, you're making it sound like we took a vote and changed the policy? It's always been three. It's always been a majority.
No, we, we actually, actually, it was very vague in the policy, that's why, it was actually me, I, it was me who actually brought this policy to the council.
I just want to move the question, because it's now 10:40.
No, I agree, I'm not going past 11.
Do you, do you want to have that come back or not?
Okay, so what I'm trying to follow is, has it always been three?
Yes.
No.
I've been on for six, five years or six years? Five years, it has always been three. And there were times where I didn't get something on, because they told me that I should go to staff first and talk to them, and work it out, and then bring it on, and that's what I did. So, I didn't always get something agendaed, but it worked out fine.
Excuse me, that was the whole point of bringing this policy, because I'm the one who raised it when I joined council, and the city attorney recalls, how do we get something on the agenda? And it wasn't clear. So, that's the whole premise for bringing that to the city council. So, we really marginalize, you know, a lot, a large portion of the residents, if you have to get a majority to get something on the agenda, so.
I don't agree that that's.
I'm looking for a vote.
Did you call for the question? So, there should be no more, okay, no more discussion then.
We do? So, you don't want to bring this back? But we don't have a majority. If we want something on the agenda, we have to have three votes. So, you no longer support having just one, but one person can put something on the agenda?
Not right now.
Okay, all right. Okay, so now, let's lead to my next item, which is, city manager said this item needed to come to council to vote, to be able to discuss it. So, it came to my attention from some people that will remain anonymous, but there were some staff and the city manager involved in a private boogie boarding event on the public beach, and the concern was that a special event permit was not pulled, or fees paid, or insurance pulled, like a, the public would have to do for an event of 20 or more people. And there were 31 people participating. So, in order to have that discussed, I will have to have two votes. So in order to have that discussed, I will have to have two votes. I just want to make sure that our staff, including our city manager, aren't above the law and are following the rules like everyone else. And so I'd like to have us discuss this.
So I'm willing to support that because I think it's important that get out in the public eye, and frankly, I want the city manager to be able to defend himself and discuss it and address it in public, so I'd be supportive of that.
Well, I don't know that the city manager needs to defend himself, but from what I heard of the event, there was a state lifeguard there, and so if you have an issue with the state lifeguards, you should turn this into code enforcement.
Oh, I didn't mention state lifeguards tonight, I was mentioning.
Well, that's what I heard about the event from, I think, you.
Well, what I've stated right now is exactly what I'm seeking support for.
Well, I think you're framing it narrowly to our staff, and I just don't.
Okay, well, either clear the air, we just, we discuss it and we clear the air.
It sounds like a hearing to me.
Sorry.
I think it should involve code enforcement, that's, that's my vote. If you think that something occurred on the beach that shouldn't have, the proper channel is code enforcement, it's not something the city council should be doing, it sounds like a hearing.
Well, there was an event on the beach and it was more than 20 people.
Then it's code enforcement.
But it involved our city manager.
Real quick, so.
And staff, so there's a difference.
Hang on, I want to, in order, the cross talk, so the request is that we bring back, is it a hearing that you're asking for or a discussion?
We don't have, we don't have that in our code to do that.
Well, we can discuss it in closed session since it involves employees, that's an idea.
I'd be willing to do that in closed session.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just say the manager has the ability to ask you to do that publicly if he chooses to do that?
Yeah, absolutely.
So it can, it can lead to whatever route you and he agree.
Absolutely.
Okay, and I'd like to vote on agendizing an RFP for legal services to include either in-house or external legal services. It doesn't mean preclude BBK from bidding, but I think it's time after four, over four years to do an RFP to see if we can provide legal services for less and have two categories, city attorney and litigation would be my desire. Do I have support for that?
I think, Scott, will you tell me if I'm wrong? Did our city used to do this and we changed, or was it Mission VA, someone city did it?
Laguna Niguel used to have in-house staff, and they, that's the only South County city, they eliminated that and went to a contract model in 2019.
Okay. So I'll speak to, the only council member that was, Crisiffy was here, you could speak to it, but I think Lieutenant Tucker was here for like 38 years?
33.
33, okay. So after that time, we did an RFP because we felt we were not getting the legal representation that we wanted to, and it has only been four years. And I don't see why putting staff and the expense through this when I know this is coming from one person that has been trying to get it. The comments tonight were that we've spent $2 million and that's too high. It is not BB and K spending the $2 million or costing us that, it is the votes of five of us to fight certain things in the city of why we are at $2 million. So I don't see going out to an RFP, the money being the reason to do that. I think the representation that we've had from BB and K has been exceptional.
Okay, it's my recommendation because our legal bills have nearly quadrupled every year for four years. So it's my suggestion tonight to see if, what we might be able to get for less, and also, as I said, separate the categories from, from city attorney to litigation, and again, doesn't preclude BBK from bidding on either one, but our legal costs are almost quadruple what they used to be every single year that we've had BBK. So I think it's only prudent for the, you know, in the best interest of the taxpayers to see what we can get. Do I have any support for that?
So I'm going to make a different recommendation or request is that we've got a budget cycle coming up in February that we look at and do a thorough analysis of the legal spending over the last couple of years so we can evaluate that, and then at that point in time decide if we want to do an RFP, because I think, for me, I'm pretty well in tune to what's been going on legally and otherwise, but I think to ask Jean to make that decision right now for an RFP is a little bit unfair on his first day, and I'd like to see the actual numbers and breakdown of costs because I know, I think as well as everybody else on the dais, that there are other costs that have been included in those fees, not just legal services. And at that point, make a decision, and at that point, I may be fine with going out to an RFP because it has been four or five years, but I will say that I've been generally pretty happy with the results that BBK's gotten to date, and, yeah, that's all I'll say.
I'm sorry, so your recommendation of categorizing the, the cost would be per issue, right? Is that how we would do it?
So I want to.
Per cause of action, or?
My, my proposal is this, is that through the budget process in February, we get a pretty thorough breakdown, as I know Scott has done, of what the expenses and the fees have been, and break those out so that the public can see them, because I think Laura's point is fair, that there have been a lot of fees, and I think public should know what those fees have been spent on, why they've been spent. And then from that point in time, we can make an analysis of whether we should go out to RFP.
So I'm going to ask Scott, I think on some of the issues that we're doing, wouldn't it be an issue to, to break out all the costs because we're in current litigation?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, if I could, I, if, if we produce that information publicly, we do an item-by-item budget tracking and prognosis prediction of where it's going, that's very detailed to the council, that's not probably a good idea to do publicly because you're vetting your war chest and your, your action plan. But there could be a public breakdown of that by matter, certainly historically, and we could show where we think those are going, and we can have recommendations for, for mid-year or end-of-year revisions if, if the council wants to adopt those.
Well, I think my point is, I've seen a lot of numbers thrown around, and to be fair, in my campaign, I was very clear that I wanted to reduce legal costs, and part of the analysis that I did coming in was what litigation was directed by the council, that was a bad idea, and what was a result of bad decision-making at the legal, and I feel like I've made a pretty good assessment of what that is, but I think the public deserves to have a, a public vetting of that, right? I mean, I think that that's, well, and to be clear, Scott, I'm not saying I want to vet stuff that we shouldn't be vetting in terms of privilege and all that, but I at least want, put it this way, we get told time and time again that we're spending too much money on legal services, I'd rather just get it out there, discuss it, explain it, and then make a decision from there and move on.
Yeah, just the simple difference between being a defendant and being a plaintiff, because when you elect to be plaintiff, that's our election, right? And so just that detail alone is, I think, very informative, and I understand where you're coming from, and we can certainly.
Yeah, well, sorry, and the final point I want to make is, you know, it needs to be known to the public as well that Best Bestin Krieger is a million dollars itself into the toll road litigation, right? Meaning the city has not paid that, you have.
No, that's, that's right.
And I understand that immensely because my firm has done the same. So I want it, I want all of the information out there, that's what I'm proposing, and then at that point in time, we can make and the public can see a fair assessment of where we should go with all that. That's, that's my recommendation.
Mayor, if I could, we've also received an opinion from the law firm of Nelson Merximer that speaks to the issue that's been raised repeatedly about conflict of interest, and they have concluded that it is well settled and obvious that signing a contract that provides for general services, general counsel services and litigation services has been established, reiterated, and brought home by the Attorney General and the FPPC many, many times. So they've taken our engagement and its iterations, including the TCA amendment, and have concluded that, that that is contemplated and impermissible and not illegal or unethical under California law, so I'll bring that information and that authority too.
That's fine, I don't, if, whether it's legal or not, that's fine, I mean, it's great that it's legal, but I'm just looking at what might be more cost-effective and efficient for us as, you know, as stewards of the taxpayers' money.
I beg your pardon, I completely respect that goal, but the, the goal that, I have heard the ethical thing mentioned again tonight, and I just appreciate the chance to address that.
Yeah, okay, well, that's good, and then.
No, it's, it's advice to our firm, but I will share the authority that's, that's in it, it's, it's quite thorough.
And then the assistant city manager's working on, he's continuing to work on compiling the legal costs that have been spent so far on some of the bigger ticket items. He's posted it for the homelessness issues, and he's working on that for the TCA, and I believe he's done that for the hospital already, if I'm not mistaken. So so the public can see, you know, in a transparent manner what we have spent so far. So my last item is just an item I actually raised earlier this year, but since it's long past and there's really no strategy that can be used again, but these legal bills for the district-based election ballot measures to correct the opposition argument, if we can make that public, that's what I'm requesting a vote on, just to finally make that public because, as we know, it was very controversial with 25 individuals from BBK working on that item totaling a little over $81,000, I believe.
So Scott, I think you've talked to us before on this issue, can you reiterate that what we've produced is what we produce and we don't produce legal bills?
As council can waive privilege at any time.
I am not ever going to waive privilege, just, that's my opinion right there.
But this is not the agenda, so if you want to agendize it, we can talk about it.
Yeah.
I'm going to release them without reading them, and I haven't read them since 2016, so I don't know.
So I don't look, as a lawyer, there's no way I would advise any client to release privileged work product information, it remains privileged and work product to this day. I understand the desire of the public to see those, but you waive it, you get stuff out there, and then the problem becomes, what are you going to put in those bills in the future? And it sort of, it then inhibits, because then you get a law firm basically saying service is rendered and that's it. And I don't really want to go down that road because I don't think that's productive. But I will say when we come back and have the discussion about legal expenses and all that, I do think that there are important quality of life issues, so maybe as part of that process, we could throw up all the lawsuits that we have and the estimates and what we expect those to cost, and we can talk about whether or not we just don't defend those or settle them or what, because, so I guess, the point being is there are certain quality of life issues that I'm going to guess that the community is going to want us to fight, and that's the analysis that I've done in terms of what do we give on and what do we not, and so. Any other requests? I have, I have one, I would like to look at, so our, our library is a, a donator in the county in terms of money, I'd like to look at finally breaking away.
We just, we just established a committee at this Orange County city managers' level, and I'm, I asked to be a part of that so we could discuss the library because we're a donor city versus some of the other cities.
Significant donor city.
Yeah.
Not even close, us and Irvine.
So we're going to be starting that process soon. I don't have a meeting on hand, but if, if I could get involved with that, see where it's going, and then report back to you on it.
Okay, that sounds great, and the other sort of items that I have for consideration, like to bring back is moving forward, I know we're doing a study on a new sheriff substation to look at placement and all that, I'd like to, to move forward with that as an agenda item as soon as we possibly can to look at.
Today, Public Works Director Bonniget and Sund and Manhart and I met and discussed that, and we're going to come back to you on the second meeting of January with an RFP to go out to select someone to help us evaluate sites throughout the city for a substation location.
I think one of the first things we need to do is, from Chief Manhart, we, we need to get what his requirements are, what his specifications are, how many parking spots he needs, how, how much space, how much space he needs, what type of furniture he needs, and so, you know, I, I think it'd be great if you and Lieutenant Manhart would work together and he give you those specifications, his requirements, I should say, and maybe some of those requirements we can't meet, but I think we need to have that discussion sooner rather than later.
Any other, any other items? There was another one, but I can't remember what it was off the top of my head, so.
You need to make sure your agenda is to a different date.
Yeah, so the item that we had earlier regarding the, of course, it's going to be taken down, so.
Nope, it's on the agenda, and you'll adjourn that unfinished business to next Tuesday.
Sorry, so that was for December 10th, right?
That's right.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make a motion that we adjourn to December 10th, to a special council meeting on December 10th. Council chambers located in the city of San Clemente, California.
Good time.
I'm sorry, 6:00 P.M.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 4-0.